Good evening and welcome to our school board public hearing. The time is now 5:30 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Dullian?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight, we welcome public testimony on school consolidations. We thank everyone in our community for being here and for being engaged with us over the last month. We know these conversations have been difficult. Public comments tonight are limited to three minutes each, and we will be accepting testimony for a three-hour time period for pre-signed up testifiers. We will take a break about halfway through testimony, about the hour and a half mark, so that everybody may have a chance to use facilities and take a breather. And then we will come back for the remaining hour and a half. People testifying in person or by Zoom must make sure they state their full name, spelling their last name for the full record. We would like to remind everyone before we get started that tomorrow, there is an opportunity to testify on HB 69. You have three opportunities to testify for an increase to the base student allocation with the House Education Committee at 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and with the Senate Education Committee at 3:30 PM. If you would like to testify for the base student allocation, you can call in to 907-563-9085, or you can also send your written testimonies to senate.education.committee@akleg.gov, or house.education.committee@akleg.gov. And now, we will begin our testimony. First up, Audra Hull. Good evening, Ms. Hull. If you could state your name, spell your last, you will have three minutes.
My name is Audra Hull, H-U-L-L. The original factors for closing Hunter, first, that it is an older building with major systems that are at end of life. Borough Assembly Member Tammy Wilson came to a parent meeting, and she stated that building improvements that are the borough's responsibilities should not be a factor considered during school closure. I reached out to the Executive Director of Facilities Management, Ms. Karen. I confirmed with her that the systems referred to by the administration need to be taken care of by the borough, not the school district. Second, we had a steep decline in enrollment. The data dashboard says that we have 325 students, down by 44 students from last year. What you have to look at is where is our average? At the beginning of the school year, we were only down 5.84% from our average. That's the best percent of any of the neighborhood elementary schools in the district. The next is Ann Ween at 8.66%, below their average. As of today, our enrollment is at 337, only 2.36% below our average. Just for the record, two other schools had a decline of 42 students and 69 students this year. Lastly, the zero-to-four population comes from information gathered by Western demographic, as per the slideshow yesterday. During the work session, it was concluded that the information that was published came from the 2020 U.S. Census. That zero-to-four population is turning five to nine years this year. The only kids we haven't seen enroll from the census is kindergarten this coming fall, and a couple birthdays in September and October that will start kindergarten in fall of 26. The last day to submit information for the census was October 15th. The data shared is completely irrelevant. According to the Pew Research Center, the demographic that is least likely to participate in a census or survey are those considered low-income individuals. According to data dashboard, 67.5% of our student body is economically disadvantaged. Furthermore, there is the newly completed 40-unit apartment complex. This is within Hunter's walk zone, and it will increase enrollment at Hunter. I keep hearing a narrative about the way housing utilization has changed in the area, but where is the proof? These reasons are either false or misleading and do not prove Hunter is worth closing, especially considering this teacher's experience in class. I have students who have gone through or are going through some really hard experiences. One has a parent that is incarcerated, another is in foster care. One has experienced the death of a close family member, another currently lacks stable housing, and nine of my students are in a single-parent home or move between two homes. These are all known facts in my class, but no one teases or gives anyone a hard time over any of it, and my kids are all working and learning and doing their best. This is a primary-aged class. Every year, we continually have three to five children in every class that experienced trauma. When it comes to closing Hunter, I echo the question I asked you last night. How are we supposed to accept this? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Hull. Up next, we have Solomon Pomerantz. Hello, Mr. Pomerantz. You can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Solomon Pomerantz, P-O-M-E-R-A-N-T-Z. Here tonight to advocate for Pearl Creek Elementary becoming a steam magnet school. Closing a school is not a sound decision for many reasons, including the off-site deferred maintenance costs. When the mayor refers to the borough's contributions to education funding, this is money that's going straight into the general fund for education for the district. The borough owns the buildings and has issued and assumed liability for their construction through municipal bonds, as is the case here in Pearl Creek. The overall maintenance of these schools is the borough's responsibility, and they meet these needs in the community through the Capital Improvement Program, or KIP. This is a separate pot of money that specifically addresses maintenance. Roofs, boilers, septic systems have largely forecastable lifespans. You're not going to have a 50-year-old roof that's going to go another 50 years. Mr. DeGraw mentioned last night that Pearl Creek's location off-city utilities was a major consideration in Pearl Creek's proposed closure. However, it's already been noted that there are plans to broaden the services to the neighborhood, including natural gas through IGU. Looking through the KIP, there do not appear to be any projects directly related to the additional complexities of operating this school on the list. It's in the borough's best interest to keep thriving neighborhood schools in the community, to bring jobs and young families who place their hopes in this place, and increase the tax base. If Pearl Creek closes, the borough will continue to have to pay for maintenance. From everything we've heard to date, the borough is ready to move Pearl Creek up the KIP list. Before you consider closing it, I ask that you seriously engage the Assembly and submit these items to the KIP that address Mr. DeGraw's concerns about the maintenance of the building. Comparing utility costs for Pearl Creek, in FY '23, which is more recent than the 2020 Census data, Pearl Creek had lower water and electricity costs, and indeed $18,000 lower operational costs in U-Park and $70,000 lower operational costs in Wood River. This is likely due to the fact that the school is at a higher elevation and that it doesn't pay for water or sewage. To not try this option of converting Pearl Creek into a steam magnet is a risk to the district and the borough. Closing Pearl Creek and consolidating into a denser footprint will not attract new students to the district and runs the risk of driving more families from it. Please don't let a scarcity mindset drive this moment's decision. Give the community of Fairbanks the chance to choose to open the transformative value of place-based steam education to a wider body of students. Do not give credence to the perception that the district is failing. Show this community that you're willing to give something new a try. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Christina Termon. Okay. And then, did we have Nikki Isman here yet? Okay. We'll go to Frank Hendrickson. Hello, Mr. Hendrickson. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Frank Hendrickson. My last name is spelled H-E-N-D-R-I-C-K-S-O-N. And I just wanted to start out talking about our parents and families. You're going to hear three hours of testimony tonight. There will be a lot... I'm a kindergarten teacher at Hunter, by the way. You're going to hear a lot of testimony tonight from parents and families who are concerned about the changes that are being made. And I'm going to submit that you probably will not hear as much from Hunter parents as you might want to. And there are a couple of reasons for this. One is, many Hunter parents are working two or than three jobs, and right now, they're at work. And another reason is, as Nancy Cheater so eloquently stated last night, there are intergenerational effects of things like boarding school experiences or other experiences with government and education that persist. I have a little girl in my class that I think of, and it took me three or four months of every day saying, "She's doing great, learning so well, she's always working hard," before her parents were able to actually look at me and smile at me. And we have a wonderful relationship now. When they come to pick her up, her dad grins at me, and I give him a thumbs up, and off we go. But what I'm saying is this, that we have parents out there who distrust, strongly distrust the educational system, and they would feel like a meeting like this is not a place for them. You and I know that that is not correct. I'm confident that you would welcome their testimony, welcome their input, but that's how they feel. That leads to the second point that I wanted to bring up, which is, if we close Hunter, and we... Much has been said about the constellation of benefits and circumstances that make Hunter work for these families, these at-risk families and at-risk children. And if we do away with Hunter as a neighborhood school and try to move these kids on to other places, yes, some of them will do just fine, but there are a lot of families that will really struggle, really struggle. That little girl's family that I mentioned, they had a hard time with me. I'm a very friendly guy, and I'd see them every day. If they are uprooted and transplanted somewhere else, they're like, if you're a gardener, you know there are plants that transplant well, and some that really struggle. We will have a lot of families that really struggle. I hope that you will consider keeping Hunter a school. It's a neighborhood school, and it provides a wonderful place for the families that go there.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
I was notified that Christina Termon is here? No, no problem. You can state your name, excuse me. State your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Christina Termon, T-U-R-M-A-N. At Pearl Creek, we have a school motto, and it's really simple. It's three words. It's inspired, compassionate, and involved. And right now, I feel inspired. I know our school district is facing a significant budget deficit, and while I realize it's beyond your power as school board members to increase the BSA, you do have the ability to make strategic moves to increase enrollment. I strongly believe that transforming Pearl Creek into a steam magnet school is a move that deserves serious consideration. I personally support this effort for two main reasons. First, increasing enrollment will boost funding for the entire district. A hundred new students pencils out to about $1 million. That helps everyone in the district. Second, it allows Pearl Creek to remain a neighborhood school. Given the current political climate, I believe opening more magnet schools is a wise direction for us to make, or to move in. Magnet schools can help protect neighborhood schools, allowing our district to provide quality education to everyone while aligning just enough with the governor's goals to secure the funding that we desperately need. The second word in the Pearl Creek motto is compassion. My daughter is a seven-year-old at Pearl Creek, and we watched the school board meeting last week, and after a Barnett teacher testified so passionately, my sweet girl looked up at me and she whispered, "Mama, they can't close that school." And I couldn't agree more with her. We all need to take Juniper's example and step into each other's shoes. I want to start with the advocates for Pearl Creek. I want to encourage all Pearl Creek families to be more compassionate, more thoughtful, and more respectful in their advocacy. They need to come to the table with facts rather than blanket statements that may inadvertently demean others. I'm going to ask for compassion from everyone. We need more compassion for our school board, towards our superintendent, towards our mayor, and you know what? Even towards Pearl Creek. Because the reality is, these closures will tear schools apart. However, I believe they will only tear our community apart when we begin to villainize each other. When you demonize any person or any group of people, you effectively halt progress. And the last thing we should be doing right now is stopping any forward movement. We need to find common ground and seek solutions. That brings me to my last word, involved. I want everyone to step up, even if your child's school isn't closing because the quality of their education is still in the hands of our state legislature. The work we did last year was not in vain. Pressure is building for a meaningful education bill to pass this session. Our school district is facing a severe situation, and because of that severity, our voices are incredibly powerful right now. We need to unite and use them. Save our schools does not just mean keeping buildings open. It means preserving the quality of education for all children in Fairbanks. So please, join me tomorrow at 3:30 PM. Let's all testify together on behalf of this district towards the Senate Education Committee because the children of Fairbanks are counting on us.
Thank you so much, Ms. Termon. Up next, Nikki Isman.
Hello, Ms. Isman. State your name, spell your last. You have three minutes. Nikki Isman, E-I-S-E-M-A-N. I'm tag-teaming on the advocacy. I know that everybody in this room and listening has already been advocating and has already been testifying, and I'm asking us all to step it up a notch. We're here because the bulk of our funding comes from Juno, from the legislature, and we're really limited in what we can do at the borough level. We are fortunate to have a group of representatives and senators in Juno this year who are really have heard everything that Christina has just said, everything that President Burnett has just said, that it's time to advocate for education. I have been spending a lot of my own time doing that these last five years, and I'm offering myself as a resource for anybody who has never testified before to the legislature. I have some materials in the back, just some printed information that reiterates the information that President Burnett gave about times and places, a little bit more about the House bill. I know that those of us who are steeped in this, sometimes use shortcuts, we use acronyms, we talk about HB. Well, it took me a long time to know that HB meant House bill, and SB meant Senate bill. And a long time for me to know who my representative was and who my senator was. And so, because I'm a librarian by trade, I have maps and phone numbers and emails, and there's an organization called Great Alaskan Schools that's grassroots, nonpartisan, and they have a wonderful handout on how to testify, and even like a little blank worksheet so you can fill it in a little bit ahead of time because if it feels nervous for some of the people here to testify at this microphone, it's definitely amped up that you know that your voice is going across the state. So I guess just that. I'm offering myself as a resource to anybody who wants to step up their advocacy. I'll be here the whole night. I have some maps and all sorts of... I mean, the maps are just to know where you live, what district you're in, who your legislators are. So I think that's all I have to say. I love this town and everybody who is working so hard for all our kids and all our families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isman. Up next, we're going to go to Zoom, and we should have Maddox McCann. Mr. McCann, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. State your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
My name is Maddox McCann, M-C-C-A-H-O-N. I'm from Carthage, Missouri. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to testify for Salta students. While I'm three hours ahead of Alaska time, I was still up till 1:30 in the morning listening to last night's work session. Administration continues to cite several reasons for closing Salta, including low and declining enrollment, nearby capacity, staffing issues, minimal transportation impact on bus routes, and the high cost per student. As a former student, I want to address each of these points tonight and explain how they are all flawed. Mr. Doran asked how the drop from K through 6 to K through 5 was factored into Salta's enrollment. Ms. Kate LaPlante claimed, quote, "There continued to be a decline after that," end quote. However, according to public enrollment data on the district's website, Salta's enrollment has only dropped from 66 to 61 students since transitioning to a K through 5 in 2022. Is this truly a significant decline, losing only five students along with an entire grade level? It hardly seems sufficient to justify claims of low and declining enrollment. The administration continues to rely on the zero-to-four age population data, projecting 426 potential students for Anderson Crawford. With a Salta closure, only 129 seats would remain. Would this eventually exceed capacity, even with middle school transitions over time? How can they be certain there won't be an influx of military families at Ileson? Further straining availability? Although I no longer live in Alaska, I've been in contact with the Salta community over the past month. As far as I'm aware, Salta still has both full-time and part-time staff. For example, the counselor splits their time between Salta and other schools. Beyond providing education, the school supports local families and offers positions that allows them to make meaningful impacts for Salta students. The administration's claim of minimal transportation impact on routes is equally weak. In the second work session, they stated that the number of bus routes would reduce from three to two, but then stated last night that the number of routes would stay just the same. Which one is it? Regardless, the number of routes being a reason to close a school is unjustifiable. Finally, Mr. Doran asked how the additional small-school allocation funding the district receives for operating Salta was factored into the cost-per-student calculations and savings. He also inquired that the numbers are misleading due to the extra money we get from the state. Mr. DeGraw said, quote, "The additional revenue that we receive from the state model because it's a small-school situation does not meet the higher cost per student that the district spends on running these schools." Mr. Doran asked for the total additional revenue. Administration failed to provide these numbers last night. For perspective, this is the administration who developed the proposed consolidation plan for failing and is failing to provide important information to back up their own claims to the board and the public. If cost-per-student is a central argument for closing a school, then all relevant data needs to be readily available and transparently presented during these work sessions. In my testimony last night, I stated the lack of data provided by administration feels like an attack on the community, and I will continue to stand by that claim. Across all three work sessions, the administration has failed to present well-supported arguments for closing Salta Elementary. I hope my testimony tonight further highlighted weaknesses and inconsistencies in the reasoning. Salta Elementary deserves better, especially from the administration. I'm a passionate former student of this amazing school. I appreciate this time and everything the board's doing. Please do not close the school. The data provided doesn't lie. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. McCann. Up next on the list, we'll have Shawna Henderson. Good evening, Ms. Henderson. If you can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Shawna Henderson, H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I want to echo many who have gone before me about the seemingly impossible job you have in front of you, created by a failure to fund public education at the state level. However, what I ask of you today is to think about the possibilities that exist before us. We have an opportunity that is born out of uncertain circumstances, and that is to redefine and reshape public education, to create a system that is based on community feedback, advocacy, and centered around the idea of parent and student choice. One idea is to create a magnet school and build off the success that Pearl Creek has found, and make it robust and available to more students, both from within and outside the district. I believe Pearl Creek is unique, but as I sit and listen to others during public testimony, I also hear what is special about other school communities. And it makes me wonder if we're missing an opportunity to redefine ourselves and stay relevant. What if schools were given a way to create a unique focus that is specific to their community and could potentially bring students currently enrolled in homeschool programs in the Fairbanks area to the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District? Could Hunter Elementary become the next Native Cultural Center where they have an Indigenous language lab and they partner with Alaska Native organizations? Perhaps the dedicated Hunter staff could continue to rebuild and repair some of the historical trauma. What if Two Rivers could build upon their Homestead Foundation and create a CTE-focused school for K-12 students, focusing on their connections with the local fire department and other agencies? What if Salta was focused on outdoor education, and they used their ski trails to bring more place-based learning to their school experience and community? And what if Midnight Sun was given the opportunity to partner with Star of the North Academy and BEST and create a hybrid educational institute that allowed all students access across multiple settings to create a different educational experience? I provide these potentials as a platform to encourage creative conversation and use our collective intelligence to fund schools, perhaps through grants, state, local funding, and hopefully, federal funding. I ask you to embrace a calculated risk. In this educational climate, I feel we have nothing to lose, or we will truly lose it all. The time is now. Listen to your communities highlight their unique qualities and find a way to embrace something different.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Allison Wilde. Hello, Ms. Wilde. You can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Allison Wilde, W-Y-L-D-E, from Two Rivers. Good evening, members of the school board and administration. I want to express my compassion for you as you face these tough decisions. I appreciate the effort and dedication you've invested in developing this plan, and hope we can work together to ensure it serves the best interests of our students, families, staff, and communities. I also want to celebrate the unique strengths and cultures of our schools. Our district is the sum of these unique parts, and each contributes to our shared success. As the principal of Two Rivers School, I want to advocate from several perspectives. First, Two Rivers is a Title I school, meaning many of our families face economic challenges. They embrace a subsistent lifestyle rooted in self-reliance and living off the land. For these families, having a school nearby is essential, not just for education, but as a community anchor, especially given the challenges and expense of traveling to town. Title I funding allows us to support these families and offset district financial challenges. Second, I want to highlight our Homestead theme, which has made Two Rivers a hub for local engagement and collaboration. In addition to partnerships I've shared before, One Tree, Two Rivers Fire Service, Fairbanks Soil and Water Conservation District, and a Strong Parent Group... and a Strong Parent Group, we've cultivated relationships with other local organizations like Porter Hill Farm, which hosts field trips, Chana Outdoor Collective, and the Last Front Deer Dog Mushing Co-op, and a host of local community members. These partners contribute to fundraisers, maintain our ice rink, and enhance educational experiences. Demonstrating the power of a school-centered community, these volunteers equate to dollars saved. We're also reaching out to serve more families. This year, we added a bus stop on Nordeale Road, increasing out-of-area enrollment by 10%. We also launched a part-time general education preschool program. Family members join students for lunch and recess, fostering strong relationships right from the start. These small changes show meaningful results. Looking ahead, we're pursuing innovative opportunities. With One Tree, and are exploring USDA National Institute of Food and Agriculture funding for agroforestry projects and grants to establish Two Rivers as a hub for sap production, sap and syrup production. These grants range from $5,000 to $300,000. Paired with our hydroponic systems, these efforts aim to create a community farmer's market, benefiting students, families, and food security, while enhancing our school's economic sustainability. This work directly reflects the district's developing mission as values, particularly the focus on creativity and innovative problem-solving. Two Rivers embodies these principles. I urge you to give us time and opportunity to continue showing what we can achieve. We have not set idle. I realize it's a gamble, but our entire staff and community is invested. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have on Zoom, Sam Barney.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Barney. If you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Samuel Barney, B-A-R-N-E-Y, and I live at 16.5 mile Chana Hot Springs Road in the Two Rivers community, and I'm a teacher at Two Rivers School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and thank you for all the work you are doing to balance the budget, to be fiscally responsible, and to provide quality educational opportunities to the families in the borough at the same time. No doubt, this is a big lift. You have some very tough decisions to make, and I do not envy the position you're in. It's my understanding that even if you close the proposed five schools, that there will still be a $6 million deficit that will need to be addressed at some point in the near future. Will this mean more school closures? Ah, no! Of course, no one here relishes that thought. So, instead of viewing this as a doom and gloom, I'm asking you to look at this as a great opportunity to rethink how we are doing education. More and more families are leaving public education or moving out of the borough. Why? They are looking for something better for their children, so let's give it to them. Can we do better with less, meaning less money coming from the top down? Of course we can. Mrs. Wilde and the whole Two Rivers community is doing just that. You've just heard from her yet again, all of the awesome innovative ideas that are being proposed and are being implemented at this time. I'm sure you've all been apprised by now of the tremendous progress that has been made at Two Rivers to do better with less in just one short year. Imagine what we can accomplish if you will just give us a little more time. We are already doing it. I understand that the bottom line comes down to reining in the budget. So please let us help you do that by allowing Two Rivers to stay open and letting us cut all the costs that would have been saved by closing us. We are already on the trajectory, on that trajectory, and will accomplish that goal if you will let us run the course. This could very well prove to be the answer, to be an answer moving forward. As the saying goes, if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always got. We can give families the educational opportunities they are looking for, for their children, and also do it in a fiscally responsible way. You have a powerhouse of an administrator sitting in your midst who is tremendously innovative and committed to solving this problem for our school. Please seriously consider the substantially practical solutions Mrs. Wilde has proposed to saving money, cutting costs, and improving education. We are already doing it. Let us help you solve this problem. We are all in. Please partner with us, as so many others have already done. Let us use Two Rivers as a laboratory to tweak education and do it better with less overhead. It's not too late to change the plan just a little bit. I guarantee this little investment of time for Two Rivers will pay dividends. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Hannah Swinning. Hello, you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Hello, I am Hannah Swinning, S-W-I-N-N-I-N-G. Today I come before you to address the matter that weighs heavily on all of us, the potential closures of my school, Two Rivers. This is not just an issue that affects adults in our community. It profoundly impacts our children. And as we navigate this difficult conversation, we must consider the weight of our decisions on their lives. We need to really think about how harmful these actions are to the kids, and when does it end? As the oldest of six kids, and moving up here from Ohio, my siblings in all different grades, and being a junior in high school myself, I had firsthand experience of how hard it is on kids and families to move from everything they've ever known. Now think of it as how hard it can be knowing you don't have a choice, but be forced to have to go somewhere else. Schools are more than just buildings. They are sanctuaries of learning, growth, and friendship. They are places where children develop their identities, foster their dreams, and build relationships that can last a lifetime. When we talk about closing a school, we are not merely discussing physical structures or financial implications. This is about our children's futures, their emotional well-being, and the stability they need during formative years. Children thrive in environments where they feel safe and supported. The school is often a second home filled with familiar faces, inspiring teachers, and the rhythm of daily routines. For many students, this is where they discover their passions, learn how to overcome challenges, and develop the resilience that will carry them through life. To uproot them from this environment is to take away a vital part of their upbringing. We must remember that children experience stress in different ways than adults. While we may rationalize a decision based on numbers, budgets, and logistics, our children can feel the anxiety that come with the uncertainty. They may not fully grasp the reasons behind a school's closure, but they will certainly feel repercussions of that decision when they are forced to adapt to a new environment, make new friends, and face unexpected changes. Now I ask you to imagine yourself being a child in this moment, suddenly torn from the known and thrown into the unknown. The fear of losing friends, the anxiety of fitting in in a new school, and the disruption of their daily routines can create significant stress, stress that we as caring adults should strive to shield from them. We should not place additional burdens on their young shoulders. Instead of closing our school, let us explore alternative solutions. Let us come together as a community to find ways to sustain our institution, to seek new resources, and to advocate for our children's right to a stable and nurturing learning environment. We owe it them to prioritize their needs above any financial or administrative challenges we might face. In closing, I urge each and one of you to look beyond the immediate implications of our decisions and consider the long-term effects on our children. They are the heart of the community, and we must ensure they have every opportunity to flourish, learn, and grow without added stress or uncertainty. Let us work together to safeguard their future and protect their right to a stable, supportive, and educational environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Christine Smith. Hello, Ms. Smith. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Christine Smith, S-M-I-T-H. Two and a half years ago, my family and I moved here from Colorado, which, by the way, several of the districts have four-day weeks, to live in our American dream in Alaska. I had the privilege of choosing to work at Salta and Two Rivers Schools as the counselor. Two Rivers being an elementary and middle school was especially appealing as I wanted to work with middle-school age students. I was excited to join schools that had reimagined education. This is why people move to Alaska, for something special, for something different. These schools are gyms that will attract families to the area. Unlike larger schools with 500 students, which are common in the lower 48, these smaller schools offer a distinctive and enriching environment. By closing these two schools, you will lose rock star teachers. You'll be forcing incredible teachers into retirement, teachers who ski with the students during recess and ice skate with them during PE, teachers who dive into culture with native students and take the time to cook recipes and build a fish rack for drying fish, teachers who raise salmon in the classroom and teach students how to trap rabbits. You aren't going to find these gym teachers just anywhere, and these wonderful teachers aren't going to be banging on the door to work at cookie cutter schools with overcrowded classrooms and no room to reimagine education and bring their own creativity to the lives of their students and foster creativity in students. The district's own mission statement talks about students succeeding and contributing to a diverse and changing society. Students who are schooled in their communities can better contribute to those communities in schools where they learn about their environment and have connections with outside resources. Small schools allow for personalized attention and learning. Students feel more connected to their schools with more leadership opportunities, and students feel a greater sense of belonging and a boost of self-confidence. These connections lead to improved self-esteem and positive mental health. Additionally, the strong sense of community in small schools helps students develop important social skills such as empathy, cooperation, and effective communication. Teachers in small schools are better able to identify and address the individual needs of their students, providing targeted support that promotes emotional resilience and well-being. Child find starts at the elementary level, where the teachers do the groundwork and find the students who need innovations and interventions to support the rest of their educational experience. Combine high schools if you must, but to combine grade schools and pack classes full of students leaves an opening for students to fall into the cracks. Young students who do not have support often do not make it to graduation. Collective efficacy is the number-one driver of student success. We have that at Two Rivers, where I've been there full-time this year. I love going to work every day and being part of a team that has reimagined education with the Homestead theme. This is totally in line with the culture and lifestyle of our students here. What a fantastic thing to have education revamped, reimagined, and in line with their lifestyle and culture. This is absolutely what public education should be working toward, and at Two Rivers, we are doing this. We need time so the culture of homesteading can be supported and live on for many generations. Our small schools are where many students come who need something different, who need those connections, and who need a new environment, but other schools have not been a good fit. We are that good fit. Let's preserve these unique educational settings to ensure every student has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, do we have Abby and Adeline Freeman? Hello, girls. If you could both state your name into the microphone for us?
Hello, my name is Abby and...
We're gonna get you a chair, a bigger chair.
Hello, my name is Abby and my last name's Spelt, C-A-R-N-A-N-I-N.
Yeah, you have three minutes.
I have been to other schools. It was hard at the other schools. It made, I needed help with a lot. I came back to Two Rivers and I felt safe. And I got all the help I needed. It's a school fit for me. There is no other school like Two Rivers. It's one of the best schools I've ever been to. They're, they would rush me, the other schools would rush me to read. But Two Rivers would let you take your time, and if you get stuck on a word, they would help you. They help you with math problems, too. I finally felt heard and I was never, I was very happy. I have never felt this good thanks to all the volunteers and staff that help us learn new things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, girls. That was a great testimony. Did your sister have anything?
Nope.
No? Okay. Thank you very much, girls. Up next, we have Caitlin Freeman. Hello, Ms. Freeman. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Caitlin Freeman, F-R-E-E-M-A-N, and I am from Two Rivers. Sorry, those are my kids. Our stories all begin with our childhood, our early years. Ooh, is what helps shape us. I'll be honest, I had plenty of mom fails. Tried to make the best choices we could at the time with the information I had had. I, I'm asking this district not to make one of them. Spent a lot of time debating on writing you a speech filled with anger, facts, a little of both, but ultimately came up with our family's story. We have a lot of it. You've all met my oldest now. What you don't know is early on, she was diagnosed with extreme anxiety, especially when it comes to unexpected changes and moves. She spent the first nine years of her life in five states in roughly 10 different homes. We can thank the military for that stability. The only years I remember her actually being my daughter and not in constant fight-or-flight mode was her years at Two Rivers. Those years were split between Kinder and First, and then the last two weeks of Third until now. Within those two years, I did find out that I didn't always appreciate our little slice of heaven. Actually, when my husband got orders to Texas and Tennessee, I was the one that convinced him not to sign a deck statement to finish out his years here and instead move on. If I could go back, I could go on and on about how the other states forgot about families, forgot about the students that shouldn't have been left behind, and the bullying at the at-capacity schools we had attended, and how nothing I did to support my kids seemed to work. Not the constant sped pullouts causing the teachers to complain to me that my daughter's pullouts were now a disruption for her class, not the three hours of complaining, or three hours of homework every night to catch her up, not the tantrums she threw daily, forcing her teachers to call me often for help. I've seen it all, from the good to the bad. What brought us back wasn't our house. It was actually a school play that was put on where teachers were actually trying to like, help me figure out the education system in other states to support my daughter. Knowing that this community was here and the coffee shop ladies are willing to help and hold my babies so I could eat my first meal and have a mom moment, knowing I barely have to mention their dad leaving again before they could check in on me and make sure I was okay on top of my kids, enjoying hours of conversations with staff members before even came one, became one myself, and staying extra-long at events because two, three hours wasn't long enough to talk to everyone. So here I am, a mom assumed to be five, willing to work, a second-year Two Rivers employee, a wife of a veteran who sacrificed everything just to give our daughters a normal childhood, with a district letting students take on the burden of a budget shortfall. I have made the impossible possible for my children, but what I will not do is trust someone willing to hurt my children, especially over money.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Summer McMillan. Hello, Ms. McMillan. State your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
I'm Summer McMillan, it's M-C-M-I-L-L-A-N. I reside in Two Rivers. I am a member of the PACT. It's the parent organization in Two Rivers, and we did a, I'm just gonna present a little data for you, and I have a printed copy I can present to the board after. We did a community outreach survey to the parents in Two Rivers. With, it was a short survey. It was only four questions. We asked about school-age children and the grades, and every family in Two Rivers that have children in school in Two Rivers responded. We had 37 responses from a student, parents from a school that has 70 students. So, you know, just about every parent in Two Rivers responded. The biggest question we asked, which was to me, I think, the most important, if the school closes, what are your plans for your students? 35% of the families currently enrolled in Two Rivers said that they would homeschool non-district. 18.9% said attending our middle, which is the majority of our middle school. Only 8.1% said they would send their kids to Willer. The other question we asked, which was also pretty important, was if you planned to homeschool, have you decided which one? 40% of the students said they are undecided. Of the families said they were undecided on which homeschool curriculum they would use. 23% said Cyberlinks, and 20% said IDEA. It's a pretty overwhelming percentage from a school so small of the parents who would not homeschool with the district. If a homeschool pod was created in Two Rivers that would be ran by the community and a non-district homeschool, 47% said maybe, they just needed more information. 25% said... Twenty-five percent said no, and 19 percent said not absolutely sure, but they prefer the school to open. So we kinda had a mixed bag of results. Now, as a parent, I have some questions with transparency. A number of us have asked the district administration and members of the school board for a breakdown of Two Rivers School specifically, budget, of the financial cost. I was told it's on the website. I look at the website, I see one number, one very large number. There is no breakdown, there is no percentage of what staff salary...
Ms. McMillan, thank you for your testimony.
Who could I, who should I give this to?
You can give it to Ms. Richardson right here, and she'll get it to the board. Up next, we'll go back over to Zoom, and we should have Jasmine Wicks. Ms. Wicks, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you can state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jasmine Wicks, W-I-C-K-S, and I reside in the Two Rivers area. Today, I would like to give my testimony in regards to the unforeseen economic impacts that school closures would have on small businesses. I would like to advocate for my fellow entrepreneurs, as well as our schools, especially those that reside in the Two Rivers and Pleasant Valley area. If the school closes, my daily life, as it is now, will become very unsustainable. I hope to provide some insight from this different perspective about the ripple effects that will occur with this closure. If the school closes, my kids and I will start our day no later than 5:30 a.m. From 5:30 a.m. until 10 a.m., there will be rushing to get out the door, driving long distances on the often dangerous surfaces, waiting in the parking lot for one school to open, waiting for one school to dismiss. This rat race is gonna take place every day before I actually start my day. My youngest will have been awake for four hours when her classes start. That leaves me with about three hours in the day to do a full day's worth of work before the commute starts back again. Currently, I'm the only doula in the entire interior of Alaska that is federally contracted with Tricare to take insurance for birth support. I provide childbirth education, postpartum support, and support during birth to Fort Wainwright, Allison, and have had clients that come from as far as Greeley. When a mama goes into labor, I am by her side anywhere from three hours to 30 hours. My current support system is amazing. It works. But with consolidations, outsourcing my own childcare has proved to be nearly impossible. I've been doing research. I can't spend hours a day commuting and provide quality care for my clients. The reduced workload would barely fund the gas that it's going to cost to complete the commute every day. Military families will lose access to essential support during childbirth and during their postpartum period. This closure's gonna have a ripple effect and could contribute to the nationwide maternal healthcare crisis, as well as add to the rates that we have currently of postpartum depression in both male and female parents in the Fairbanks area. On a personal level, I just can't find a way to make it work without closing my business. I wrote the governor's office to advocate for our schools. They suggested I tell you guys that we should make Two Rivers a charter as the governor plans to introduce legislation that can enable this. Personally, I would just like to say if Two Rivers has to close, please consider allowing those kids to enroll in a K through H charter so that families can stay together and those of us who own businesses still work. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Wicks. And staying on Zoom, our next testifier will be Mary Dean Stevenson. Ms. Stevenson, can you hear us? Ms. Stevenson, are you there?
She's on, she just needs to unmute her mic.
If you can unmute your microphone, Ms. Stevenson, are you there?
Maybe we can move on to another and check back with her.
Okay, we'll come back. So then we will go to Naomi Pomerantz. Hi, Ms. Pomerantz. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Naomi Pomerantz, P-O-M-E-R-A-N-T-Z. Thank you for the opportunity for so much public testimony tonight. My family and I moved to Fairbanks this past summer so I could take up our position as a pediatrician in our community, a community I've come to deeply value and appreciate during our short time here so far. I have a toddler, but I don't have any kids in any of the school closures, in any of the schools listed for closure. However, like everyone here, I'm saddened that the dire state of funding for our education in our state has placed school board members in a position where you're forced to choose the best worst-case scenario when it comes to deciding which schools, if any, to close. I'm aware that flat funding for schools over the past seven years, as well as outmigration from the state and reduced enrollment in our public schools, are some of the main factors that have led to this situation, but I do not feel that this should narrow our ability to see what is in front of us today. Like I've been telling state-level policymakers, if we don't educate the next generation, we limit the potential for growth and development within our communities. And if we don't provide decent education for families who choose to either stay in our fantastic state or move here and make it their home, then we will only exacerbate the brain drain that's currently biting Alaskan communities. From a medical perspective, Fairbanks and Alaska struggles to foster the development of local medical technicians and professionals, medical assistants, lab techs, PT, OT, let alone doctors and nurses, and we pay dearly for visiting professionals to staff our services. We should be looking at ways to foster and develop homegrown talent from within our community and work together to build self-sufficiency and a robust workforce going forward. Dr. Maynard talked yesterday about the pivotal role that Hutch plays as a premier career in technical high school in fostering career technical experiences to help manage our critical labor shortage. I implore the board to think creatively in allowing Pearl Creek to help the district become competitive by proving, by providing STEAM education, so we can do the same in other critical areas of our society, and provide Fairbanks and Alaska as a whole another arm to us becoming more self-sufficient. Turning our Pearl Creek Elementary School into a neighborhood STEAM magnet school of choice would allow us to build on the deep connections the school community already has with STEAM community partners, as well as opening up access to STEAM education to the wider Fairbanks community. With access to robust before-and-after-school childcare on Pearl Creek school grounds, I do not buy into the notion that a Pearl Creek education is only available to those families who do not have two full-time working parents. Pearl Creek has been and will remain a neighborhood school, providing high-level education and extracurricular activities to those that want it. Focusing on a STEAM model is not just an incubator for doctors and engineers. It's about teaching children skills of problem-solving, critical thinking, and the use of evidence on which to make informed decisions. I strongly believe that the proposal to turn Pearl Creek into a magnet school is an informed, conscientious decision by our community.
Thank you, Ms. Pomerantz, for your testimony. We're gonna go back to Zoom. Mary Dean Stevenson, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead and state your name, spell your last, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Mary Dean Stevenson, S-T-E-V-E-N-S-O-N, and I'm from Two Rivers. My son has attended Two Rivers for the last three years. We moved during COVID and came from a small rural school in Colorado that was similar. He has been changed and thrived in Two Rivers Elementary due to the small school size and student-to-teacher ratio. Even the board president stated last May that a lower PTR is better for students while school closures would cause increases. I understand budget cuts need to be made, but at what cost? My son joined the student council this year as a treasurer, running on his motto of understanding the importance of saving and spending money to enjoy activities while being educated, something the district has repeatedly failed to example. Where else can you have a son who is able to put on his skis and get himself to school every day? The students of Two Rivers would have to endure significant transportation time increases based on the new boundaries, along with current transportation issues related to road conditions and time delays related to durham issues. Closing Two Rivers only makes the issue worse for these students. I believe currently there are six buses that help transport Two Rivers students to middle school and high school and elementary. This cost would be increased with needing eight buses if the students did not go a homeschool route, just as we saw last week that there was significant transportation delays just because the road of Two Rivers is treacherous during the weather. Two Rivers really focuses on the strengths of their students. Last year, we looked at our community's roots and embraced a homestead theme. This included partnerships with the Fairbanks Soil and Water Conservation, leading to winning of a national agricultural classroom grant for our innovative and collaborative approach. One Tree Alaska is helping to create a STEM program that would help bring funds and partnerships to the school and the Two Rivers community. We ask that while making this difficult decision, you account for not only the cost savings, but also alternatives and numerous impacts on both the community and our children. My son may only have one year left in elementary, but Two Rivers is our community, and we need to stand up for that community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Kristy Downing. Hello, Ms. Downing. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Kristy Downing, D-O-W-N-I-N-G. Good evening. I'm here before you tonight wearing many hats when it comes to school in Fairbanks. I have lived here for 30 years and have seen many changes over the decades in our schools, some for the better, but most not. When we speak of additional school closure, my heart sinks for my own kids and all the other kids affected by this. My heart sinks for our community as we experience anew the terrible effects of disbanding our beloved schools time and again, and the myriad ripple effects that brings to this generation of not only children but whole families. You speak of lower enrollment numbers, which is true, but how many of those are due to families leaving our district but not our community? How many of those families that reflect a lowered enrollment are right here among us but have chosen an alternative learning path for their children with a homeschool program outside of our district? I've worn the hat of a homeschool parent myself, and I'm not just talking about through the pandemic. I schooled for four years, excuse me, I homeschooled for four years as it was the right thing to do at that time for my family. I chose to homeschool through Best because I felt it was important to have the money stay within the district. There are many families that do not realize the backlash effect of choosing an out-of-district homeschool program, that each program is in fact connected to an actual school district within Alaska, and that district receives their education funds. I know there are other reasons folks choose a homeschool besides Best, but we are losing these families from our district right from under our nose. And as our school district is circling the drain, they continue to jump ship. We need more options for more students. The idea that my kid will go to a charter school is so out of the ballpark, the waitless are ridiculous, but the interest and the intent from families is there. It shouldn't be about closing schools, but about how to reimagine the schools. Another hat I wear is that of a second-grade teacher at Pearl Creek. There's been a lot of work done over the last year, and specifically over the last month, to reimagine Pearl Creek as a STEAM magnet school, to include the same boundaries as we currently have, so all families sending their children through our doors every day will have the same opportunity to do so, but we would open the doors to an additional 100-plus students from across the district. This concept has been supported and flushed out by a large group of supportive parents, teachers, community members, and other stakeholders. It has been heavy lift, but is a worthy concept whose time has come. We hear it over and over that parents want schooling options. I also wear the hat of a community member and teacher who does not know what the future holds in regards to my place in this community. I've worked in Nordeale Elementary School, closed, Best Homeschool, and now Pearl Creek Elementary School, might close. And I wonder if Fairbanks is trying to tell me something? Is my time done here? Are there opportunities elsewhere for me? And I am not alone in this. Being displaced time and again digs at morale. Do we risk losing more families from our community and thus perpetuating the spiral as enrollment continues to decline because of the very actions we take here?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
If you would, you could send that to the rest of the board, or you could send it to the board so we can read the rest of it. That'd be great.
Okay. Send it via email or hand it over over here.
Yeah, School Board K-12, yeah.
Thank you.
Or, yeah, or you give it to Ms. Richardson if she can get it to us, too, if you have the copyright.
I'll do that, yeah.
Thank you. Up next, we'll have Allison Moensen. Hello, Ms. Moensen. You can state your names, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Allison Moensen, M-O-G-E-N-S-E-N. Good evening, and thank you again for your time. I'd like to ask that maybe you have another work session before you vote, so you can discuss tonight's testimony. I'd also like to start with a fun fact that toilets at Pearl Creek don't back up because we are not on public utilities. They back up because kids toss rolls, toilet paper, or wadded paper towels in it. And in the census report, oh, I forgot my stuff back there, it is very clear that the West End schools have the highest up-and-coming zero-to-four age population. Three schools, the only three schools from the west side of town, have data that indicates 1,453 incoming littles to our west-side neighborhood schools. If you cut one of the west-side schools, there will not be enough building capacity to hold all these eager young minds. According to the census map, the U Park zone has 599 kids in the age range of zero to four, Wood River has 595, and Pearl Creek has 259, plus the number from Murphy Dome area, which has been cut off the map. This influx of students will overpopulate our schools, and we will then be sending our students to schools that are way overcapacity or having to, again, reshift the boundaries. We owe it to our children to look ahead to what is to come. It is not in the best interest of the West End schools to close Pearl Creek. Cutting Pearl Creek would make this issue spring from a small spark to a huge force fire of overpopulation at the West End schools. By moving Pearl Creek students to Wood River and U Park, it will already be putting the schools to a peak capacity. I believe there was a board member that said 90% of the highest is the highest that you want to get in school capacity. Just with the incoming population of zero-to-four-year-olds, this alone is going to push them, the west-side schools, over the limit. If Pearl Creek remains open, overcrowding does not become an issue, as Wood River and U Park are not so high-capacity. If Pearl Creek is closed, U Park is slated to be at 498 students. That is 88% capacity. Wood River is slated to be at 471 students, and that's 84 capacity, or 84%. Between the two of these schools, the data shows they would be getting 1,200 new students. Over four years, if we assume that there is an even-aged breakdown between zero-to-four kids, that's 300 kids entering school as kindergartners each year, or 150 kids per year at each Wood River and U Park. If we consider a PTR of 25 kids per kinderclass, that is six kindergarten classes at each of Wood River and U Park over a period of four years, this is not sustainable. I'm not sure why, on the chart of zero-to-four population density, only one number from each zone was used. My data comes from adding all of the numbers of zero-to-four kids in each school zone from the map. The number on this chart seems to omit the majority of the population in each school zone. Please also consider that there is slated to be a new neighborhood in Esther in a few years. This would add even more population to these West End schools. The truth of the matter is, is that the West End is growing, and there will be an influx of six kinderclasses at each of Wood River and U Park, according to the data on the census report. What happens in three years when the schools are overcrowded? If we look at the data, the data the district provided on the slide deck of the zero-to-four population, Pearl Creek has the fourth-highest count at 117, yet it is listed all the way down in ninth place with a score of six out of 10. Why is the number not scored a nine or a 10 if it is the fourth-highest incoming zero-to-four population? After all, Tick Brown has scored nine with a lower count.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Moensen. Up next, we have Heidi Wood. Hi, Ms. Wood. If you can state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Heidi Wood, W-O-O-D, and I'm from Fairbanks. Hi, team. First and foremost, thank you for sitting in that seat and doing the hard work. We appreciate you and all that you are doing, and we mean it. I want to thank those who have met with me. Additionally, I want to apologize for the nastiness that you've all had to endure. It is not helpful. I know many of you personally, and I know that you don't take this situation lightly. You also know that I am from Fairbanks, and I love this community deeply. I believe you fight for what you love. Some of you also know I married an East Coaster. As a child, that East Coaster received one of the best educations this country had to offer. When we got married, and we had the hard conversation of staying in Alaska, I convinced him we should stay. I was not going to be part of the brain drain that is consuming Fairbanks and Alaska. I'm a physical therapist and made the conscious decision to return home after I spent seven years away getting my education. My husband wanted us to go, in part, as we had children, to give them educational opportunities. I convinced him those opportunities are here as well. This is something we should all be thinking about. As a physical therapist working for Tana Chiefs Conference in a closed healthcare system, I work on a model of prevention. We, as a community, need to think in this model in order to reverse what is happening. People are moving to Fairbanks in their 20s. People are moving to Fairbanks in their twenties, staying for a few years, then moving when they have children, in a large part due to the limited education options for these children. If we want people to stay here, we need to make it attractive. In the healthcare world, we cannot recruit providers to come to Fairbanks. If we do not have medical providers, we will not have a community. They do not want to come here because of the dearth of educational opportunities for their children. We have to think about this and the significant impact this has on the health of our whole community. We need to make this community attractive. A magnet school at Pearl Creek does just that. It makes Fairbanks a more attractive place for people to live and raise their children. We are in a unique time with significant momentum. Please give us the opportunity to seize the momentum, utilize the momentum, and create a world-class magnet school for the children of Fairbanks. People are asking for this to happen, and they are asking it for it to happen at Pearl Creek due to its location, the green space, and proximity to the university. We have strong data that shows we will be able to pull back kids whose family have chosen homeschool or private school back into the district. We also have a large number of grants identified that would not only help fund the school, but have indirect funding which would go to the district admin. Let us run a lottery on the school district's website to identify people who would send their kids to Pearl Creek Magnet School. There is already this much interest in a hypothetical idea of a school, which futures is currently unknown. Imagine if the school board and the district got behind it, and we were advertising a real school instead of a hypothetical one, what that number would actually be. Our district is at a pivotal moment in history. Please take that risk. A moment which we need to get right for the future of our children and this community as a whole, a community we all love. Let's do something positive, pivotal, and proactive rather than reactive.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Clara Cooper. If you can state your names by your last, you have three minutes.
Hi. Hello, my name is Clara Cooper, C-O-O-P-E-R. I'm an eighth grader at Barnett Magnet School. Next year, I'll be attending Lathup High School, and although this is my last year at Barnett, I stand here to defend the importance of Hunter in the Barnett Middle School in regards to shutting down Hunter and turning Barnett into a K-5 school. I can confidently say, after going through middle school at Barnett and listening to people's experiences at other schools, that you cannot find what we have anywhere else. By the time you're in middle school at Barnett, you're like a family. The support and acceptance is unwavering. Next year, I'm not scared to go to high school due to what Barnett has given me. That school is like my second home, not just because I go there every day, but because it feels like a home. Nothing is constant in life, but I can proclaim that the family and memories I've created at Barnett will stay with me forever. And it's not just the middle schoolers affected either. The younger grades at Barnett lose mentors. I got the opportunity last year to become a TA and help younger classes is one of my explorations. In my second quarter, I TA'd for Mrs. Delaire, a kindergarten teacher at Barnett. I walked in for the first time, and the kids, and the kids just looked at me and sort of like, who's this giant standing right there? But at least five of them ran up to me and just gave me a hug. I immediately connected with them, and throughout the quarter, learned responsibility and leadership. Even now, those kindergarteners, now first graders, run up to me, and they'll go, Clara, Clara! I found a passion working for kids because of the opportunities found at Barnett. Most importantly, though, young kids like them will lose that connection in future mentor experiences found nowhere else. And now, I ask a question: Is it worth upending not only the lives of Barnett families, but countless others across the district? I've listened to testimonies from Hunter families, and it's obvious to me that Hunter is as much of a staple as Barnett, where the students of Hunter rely on their school as much as we rely on ours. If they are closed down and Barnett is switched to a K-5, students are ripped from their community and forced to a new one. Hunter students who relied on walking to school would then be expected to catch a bus. If they miss that bus, the terrifying, the terrifying walkover airport, one that I, as a 14-year-old, hate, would likely keep them from attending school. If Hunter must unfortunately close, please reconsider turning Barnett into a K-5 school. Logistically, I understand it makes sense to displace the 135 Barnett students. However, this doesn't take into account what makes Barnett great, that we are groups, friends, and families from parts of town that don't normally connect, and yet, we have created a community of togetherness here. It would be extremely detrimental to these families and students to just scatter us to the wind. I understand y'all make hard decisions, and this is one of the worst and most gut-wrenching. But I ask that if you are seriously considering switching Barnett to a K-5, please consider that we're not just a number, we're a school and family. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Ben Loeffler. Sorry if I got that wrong. Good evening. If you could state your names by your last, and you have three minutes.
Thanks. It's Ben Loeffler, L-O-E-F-F-L-E-R. I think it's safe to say we're all here because the reality of education is changing, both through the policy and technology, and it's moving towards more choice. And I think this can be a good thing as long as we can adapt and learn. From data I can find, roughly half of borough families currently choose schooling options outside the public system, while the nationwide average is closer to 20%. And like others, I fear we're in a downward spiral of families leaving the public school system. I want to state that my intention is to keep my children in public schools, and that my priorities for their public education above all else are small class sizes with good teachers and enriching opportunities outside the core curriculum. My concerns that bring me here today are less about my children specifically and more about our community as a whole. I appreciate the information provided in yesterday's work session. I think it does a good job of communicating the trade-offs and rationales for the proposed closures. However, it presents the problem to be solved as a zero-sum situation where existing students and staff must simply be reallocated across the map to meet the bottom line. I also take issue with the school board decision to request a single option and effectively at the 11th hour. This serves to reduce the ability for the board to serve in its proper advisory role, and it risks the perception of it being a rubber stamp for district proposals. I think we need a vision and leadership from the school board and the district to reverse this spiral and create a public school system that draws students back in. I appreciate the district's efforts to consider equity in their closure recommendations, but I think we must consider long-term equity. We don't want to choose a path that leads to a future where only those who can't afford alternatives choose public or neighborhood schools. In the long run, I think diverse participation in public schools will produce a more equitable system for all. I worry the proposed closures move us towards more economic segregation in education rather than less. So in summary, please don't make decisions based on zero-sum reasoning. We need to find ways to grow enrollment. I hope you can avoid short-term solutions that forfeit long-term possibilities. Yes, you must balance the budget this year, but our community needs you to do so while reversing current trends that got us here. And finally, I think you have lightning in a bottle with the current engagement and enthusiasm for a STEAM magnet program at Pearl Creek. This is a real proposal to grow enrollment, reengage the staggering number of families that have left the public system, while demonstrating leadership and innovation. I think this proposal deserves a public vote of the school board. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Judith Grunau. Good evening. State your names by your last, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Judith Grunau, G-R-U-N-A-U. Good evening. I apologize, I'm going to be talking really fast to fit everything in. First, thank you for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. Closing schools may address a budget problem, but it discourages community growth. It could lead to families choosing alternative school options, likely leaving the district and even the state. Instead of closing schools, we need to provide more educational options, attract more families to the district, and grow our community and show how awesome Fairbanks is. Last night, Morgan, you said charter school buildings could possibly maybe share neighborhood school buildings. What a fantastic out-of-the-box idea that could benefit both entities. Kate LaPlante, last night, she mentioned that reducing costs in rural schools by offering a scaled-back program could actually be a viable option if we explore it. Examples would be a head teacher, a counselor who serves as a music teacher, and a counselor, all these different things. Parents in Two Rivers and Salcha may prefer having a local school with fewer program options rather than losing their neighborhood school altogether. I think you've heard that from Two Rivers tonight. The Pearl Creek efforts have shown high interest in a STEAM magnet school. The district originally estimated an additional cost for magnet schools at $450,000. In the last two weeks, 79 students from out-of-district have expressed interest in the STEAM magnet school. With the current BSA, this would bring in $450,000 to the district if they were part of this. There are also many other grants available for STEAM opportunities for a school that could help fund it. But let's think bigger. The Hope School District in Arkansas was awarded nearly $15 million. The Texarkana School District in Arkansas received $11.4 million through the U.S. Department of Education Magnet School Assistant Program. Why? Because they weren't just applying for one school. They were reimagining their entire district. These grants were used to develop magnet school programs emphasizing STEAM pathways from kindergarten through high school, connecting students to career paths. So what's step one? An elementary magnet school that's STEAM-focused. Pearl Creek is on it. What's step two? Look at doing this for middle school. You have Barnett, maybe it changes into a STEAM-focused school. Or maybe this idea is bigger and you need two middle schools. You go to high school, you already have Hutchinson, already doing tons of STEM. You go Career Technical Learning Program, already part of the district, and the North Star College. Fairbanks has the framework in place, we just need to apply for the grants to do it. I'm a grant manager, the money is out there. It's not that hard to apply for these funds. We need to re-envision and think outside the box for other cost savings as well. We can explore the idea of transferring schools back to the DOD. The math seems to work on that, but I haven't really seen it fleshed out by this board. We can optimize maintenance in the schools and reduce costs by partnering with our existing apprenticeship programs, our unions, and our training facilities. Stop making this one-size-fits-all. Let's go ahead and make this unique to everybody. Right sizing does not need to be one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Tricia Slaven. Good evening. If you could state your names by your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Tricia Slaven. I'm here as a parent of a Midnight Sun student. He is in Ms. Bob's classroom, Regina Fraser. It's easier for the kids to say Ms. Bob, so you're just going to hear me call her that. Maybe you're not aware of the delicate ecosystem that's required for the special education parts and the general education parts of an elementary school to mesh together and to create the equal learning environment that you guys talk about at the beginning of your meetings. My son, previous to meeting Ms. Bob, was nonverbal, and because of her, she introduced him to the Lamp Words for Life program. And in fact, the creator, John Halloran, visited us in Fairbanks this past fall, and I spoke with him in between the meetings, and he spoke so glowingly about how Midnight Sun, the entire school, every teacher knows the Lamp program. They're very well-versed in it, meaning my son, who is basically an ESL kid, can talk to anybody in the school. You're not going to find that somewhere else, because that took years for Ms. Bob, who has been in this district for over 15 years and has worked with us as sometimes the only IR teacher in North Pole. We didn't have that at Tickasik Brown, because that's where he started at the preschool program. You guys move, or whoever moved the preschool program to Midnight Sun, and it is incredibly disappointing to hear that our school is on the chopping block because our building might look nice. It is not just about the building. It's about the children, it's about the teachers, and all of them working together to make my son, who is autistic and an eloper, safe. You're not going to find that, you're not going to be able to build that very quickly in another school. Tickasik Brown does not have that stability. I know that for certain because I went there. I know that for certain because my son, who is in the sixth grade and is sitting with us today in the audience, had to be moved to Borial Sun because we could not handle Tickasik Brown anymore. I would like to really invite you guys to come see our classroom, come see Ms. Bob, come see our paras, come see that one of her paras has dedicated now her life to trying to be a teacher so that we have more for our kids. You can't find that anywhere else, and you're not going to. And I am incredibly saddened to see that our school is on y'all's list. We are in between North Pole and Fairbanks. We are centrally located. We have a team already in place that has worked so hard together. You can't find that anywhere else, and you can't build that on just a year, meaning that my child is going to be the one left behind. His safety, his hard work is going to be taken away simply because our building might look nice, and I know that that is unfair. And I would like for you guys to consider to please coming to visit our school. Come see the hard work that Ms. Bob, our paras, and our entire school, our teacher who is not from here stands outside every morning in the cold and greets every single student by name. I don't see that anywhere else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Tietzie McPherson.
Good evening.
First name and the last name.
Ms. Maple, help me.
Okay, so the last name is McPherson, M-C-P-H-E-R-S-O-N, and I'll read from my phone because my printer was down. I guess I'll begin by saying thank you to all of you who've taken my calls over the last two days with my persistence. Dear school board members, thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback on the school consolidation plan and on your continued efforts to address the district's educational deficit. Barnett is the only K-8 magnet school. Barnett's magnet model provides access to this community-centered K-8 education model. Barnett emphasizes exploration and learning, and it works hard to support students pursuing their interests in the exploration model. This means blending classes across grades and having mixed-grade groups and explorations, which creates friendships but also mentorship across grades. Middle schoolers become leaders and mentors to younger students. But more importantly, Barnett speaks of choice. This is what Barnett is for my child and many others, a choice for families. In his 2024, Alaska families want better. Education excellence for every student, education priorities. Governor Dan Levy stated, "I want to empower families and students with educational options." Barnett is such an option. The governor further stated, "I believe it's unacceptable that our students aren't getting the quality public education they deserve. I want to provide more educational options." Under his targeted priorities of empowering families and students with educational options, he stated the desire to support the growth and innovation of charter schools. While Barnett is not a charter school, it does, to quote the governor's document, "foster diverse and innovative educational environments that adapt to community needs." The continued support of Barnett as a K-8 magnet school would further attract and retain high-quality educators and increase student achievement, both goals of the governor's educational priorities, specifically those aligned to target investment for improved educational results. And I'm going to go off-script. I've spent a lot of time speaking with a lot of you. I've called every representative. I've tried to call Representative Murkowski because she works so hard to ensure that this community is military-friendly because of our strategic importance. And while I appreciate her effort, the school system is not supportive to those families. Part of our brain drain is we have families coming here, they complete their tour of duty, and they leave because they don't know which school district they're going to be in. Part of what's mandated in the Alaska Constitution is a quality public education. We've had many people here giving options, and I appreciate all those options, and I am certainly happy I'm not in your seats. And I think we need to maybe take a step back. I don't think February 4th should be such a hard and fast deadline. Let's listen to all the options, all the out-of-the-box thinking that's being presented. It's not a black-and-white issue. Our kids and what the future holds for them should never be a black-and-white issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Christina Reed. Good evening. If you could state your names by your last, you have three minutes.
Christina Reed, R-I-E-D. I'm a single mom of three children at Barnett and the music teacher of our 416 K-8 students and a recent Alpha Delta Kappa Innovation Grant recipient for the Northwest, utilizing our middle school students for reading buddy literacy and ABCs of music. I would like to thank you, members of the school board administration, for detailed consideration of this working phase so far. We've been placed in this consolidation situation with lack of funding from state for BSA, and we can only hope that the future will hold a more sustainable level of funding. Schools like Hunter in high-needs neighborhood should be protected from the most significant impact on families and students. While participating in the school board discussions over the last few years, it's encouraging to hear groups like Pearl Creek think outside the box to incorporate what Barnett has found so much success with: our magnet model. You may have been asking yourself, what makes Barnett magnetic? Our 416 students are proudly K-8. We serve a Fairbanks City walking zone of low socioeconomic students and lottery-in-diverse families from all parts of the borough. We have no transportation costs, a savings for schools of choice. Our outstanding test scores speak for themselves. We have a waitlist each year of 500 students looking to gain admission to our excellent programs that are that our staff has cultivated to imagine, create, and explore a variety of studies and interests. Barnett families count on keeping their siblings together, forming well-rounded students over nine years with two-year looping classes from first to second grade and third to fourth grade together. Our catalog of over 100 exploration classes our students choose from each quarter includes things like robotics, video production, yoga, Alaska Sports and Rec Debate Band Orchestra Choirs, musicals, nature writing and art journals, sign language, Spanish culture, home ec, native mask-making, sewing, clay-making, engineering, yearbook, stop-motion animation, our student-produced show Good Morning Barnett, service learning art, and additional options for interventions in reading and math and enriching SPED programming. Our middle school students are the cornerstone of our peer programs for literacy with reading buddies, peer tutors for math, and hands-on experiences as TAs and in primary classrooms. They lead by example in community service, provide sources of strength with their peers, and run school activities like dances and carnivals. Even though cuts in funding and staff year after year have whittled away at the number of offerings available to our students, we've made do at 100% capacity. Knowing that other schools would love to emulate our model is the highest form of flattery. One point for your information, Barnett's current walking zone only applies to K-5 students in lottery rules as-is. We would welcome neighborhood kids from our sister school Hunter if they close. But I hope to oppress upon you the loss of the sixth or eighth grade model would have a detrimental impact on what makes Barnett magnet so attractive and successful.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Corinne Lundell.
Good evening. State your names, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Corinne Lundell, L-U-N-D-E-L-L, and Two Rivers. Our district values include belonging, community, creativity, and growth. And belonging has been my focus at the classroom level, and it's the message all the schools wish to send to their students. We're here to educate students. I mean, the productivity of the young minds that we grow completely depends on their mental health, which brings me back to our value of belonging. A teacher must build a good relationship with both a student and parent. It's imperative that we really see kids, see what they struggle with, and see what they have to offer so that we can convince them that they are a valuable member of the community. How do we do this? Well, we tweak schedules, we adjust groups, we assign the adult that can make the biggest difference. And we think creatively. We make time for projects that build pride and absorb ourselves in place-based opportunities. We make sure students feel they belong. This we can do in a local, smaller school. Our school district is large. It represents a little nation full of groups of people sharing different life experiences. And we know there are unique stresses and successes in each of the schools that are on that closure list. And each of these schools has people ready to field these stresses and successes. We know our students can be very sensitive to changes in their lives, and a change in location could be traumatic. The bus ride alone will increase our absent rate guaranteed. And if students aren't going to schools that they struggle, if they're going to schools they struggle to belong in, the absence rate will increase even more. By closing schools, we lessen our ability to focus in on student needs. We lessen our ability to relate. We lessen the chance of offering students that one adult that may create a relationship that truly impacts their future. Leaving schools open at all costs is how our district can maintain the value of belonging. It is how we can divide and conquer to best meet mental health needs so that the education we offer our students is used to its best potential. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Carissa Mahler.
Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
I'm Carissa Mahler, M-A-H-L-E-R. Hello, my name is Carissa Mahler, and I'm a parent of two Barnett students. When we learned that our daughter was accepted into Barnett, we were thrilled with the educational opportunities the school offers. The additional resources provided by Barnett have been instrumental in helping both of my children reach grade level in reading, math, and writing. Today, I'm here to express my concerns and frustrations regarding the potential planned to change Barnett's structure from a K-8 program to K-5, which would require six and a half years to transition to another middle school, including my daughter. Barnett is the only lottery magnet school in our district offering a K-8 structure, making a truly unique choice for families. Changing this structure would eliminate one of the few choice education options available in our community and the only K-8 magnet school model. I believe this change would negatively impact students and the overall educational experience in several ways. The current K-8 model allows students to grow and mature in a stable environment that supports their academic, social, and emotional development over extended time. Having older and younger students in the same building fosters a unique dynamic where mentorship and role modeling thrive. Younger students, including my own children, have benefited greatly from these positive influences. Additionally, shifting Barnett to a K-5 model would place undue strain on other middle schools, potentially leading to overcrowded classrooms, reduce personalized attention for students. Families are also facing a significant logistical challenges, particularly those students attending Hunter, which is one of the only elementary schools on the south side of Fairbanks. I've also heard concerns from parents at Ryan Middle School about their ongoing struggles with behavioral issues, which are impacting their students' ability to receive the focused education they need to succeed. Adding more students to an older-y strain systems raises the question, how will these schools effectively support additional students when they are struggling to meet their current needs? I respectfully urge the School Board to reconsider this decision and engage in further discussion with the community. I think it's essential that we prioritize decisions that support the long-term academic, social, and emotional well-being of all students beyond just logistical and financial considerations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We're going to do two more and get to number 30, and then the board will take a quick 10-minute recess. So with that, we will have up next Sarah McConnell.
Good evening. State your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah McConnell. I'm C-C-O-N-N-E-L-L. I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Pearl Creek Elementary. I'm a professor of music at University of Alaska Fairbanks. This is my family's fifth year here, living in Fairbanks. To the School Board and all of those involved in making an incredibly difficult decision, I do not envy you, and I appreciate your time and listening to all of us here tonight. First, I would like to say I support making Pearl Creek a STEAM magnet school. I think that there's a lot of explored and unexplored potential that Pearl Creek, its teachers and staff can offer its current students, in addition to other students who would come in. That being said, I would like to acknowledge the difficult situation that you are in. I wouldn't pretend to know what it's like to be you, and I know that there is a huge debt, you being the board. I know that there's a huge debt that must be dealt with. But I have to ask, why are we having to take this debt out on the most innocent of residents in this area? Our children are young and vulnerable and deserve the best opportunity to learn and grow up in the proper environment for them. And that environment is going to look different for each child. This decision, closing five elementary school, is arguably being preemptively made, and hundreds of students' lives are going to be negatively affected because of it. That is fact, no matter how you slice it. Students at all the schools are going to see change. They're going to be moved around, some potentially great distances, just Two Rivers and Selshah, all because of this money problem. Or perhaps students will make it to school less often because of the lack of easy access, such as those at Hunter, who won't be able to walk to school anymore if Hunter closes. When I moved here nearly five years ago, driving from Texas through Canada in the middle of COVID, I wasn't entirely sure what I was driving to, but I did know that I had a good feeling about it. And sure enough, when I got here, everyone went out of their way to make me feel welcome, even to the point of a kind elderly couple giving me their place in line during the 2020 presidential election because I had my then-five-year-old daughter with me since my husband hadn't moved here yet. I walked in, looked around to see the very long line, and there was this elderly couple that looked at me and said, "Here, you can have our place." They went to the back of the very long line and let me take their place close to the front, even though it was a great inconvenience to them by waiting much longer than they had already had to wait, as it was. We, Fairbanks, is a town of much of mixed political views, mixed preferences, and personalities, but it seems like we've always looked out for each other. This, however, closing down five schools is not looking out for each other. If we want our town to thrive and our population to grow, we should not dismiss what's best for our future generations because it's the cheapest option. Living up here away from the Lower 48, surrounded by such a beautiful landscape of nature and a beautiful mixture of cultures and people, we have the opportunity to continue to grow and educate everyone on equal footing, or at least start their education on equal footing. We won't be doing that if we close these five elementary schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Cecilia Hudson.
I thought I was 34.
State your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Cecilia Babes Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I live in North Pole, and all my grandchildren have gone to Midnight Sun since kindergarten. Now, I wrote this long thing, but I crossed out a lot of things because I think we're barking up the wrong tree here. You guys were given something that you didn't deserve, something the legislature and our governor put upon you to make these kind of decisions. And it's not right. Who we should really be talking to is them, but they don't seem to listen. So all this here, all these people here, each school belongs to a community. We are ripping the community away from the schools and the schools away from the community. Like, you can walk and talk to somebody, and they'll say, the conversation will always shift, "Where are you from?" "Oh, my kids go to Midnight Sun," or "They go to Hunter." That's what community does. They tell you where they're from and where they're proud they're from. So let us remember that it's the people who own these schools, and this is their community school. And it's the taxpayers, such as parents, grandparents, who truly should have a say where their tax money gets spent on. We need to ask the government and the legislature, why are you dogging education? Wasteful spending. Do we really need a new Badger Overpass? Or the complicated roadwork outside of the Fort Wainwright Gate? I mean, prioritize your money. You're overspending like, it's like a wife telling her what her budget is, but yet he goes out and buys something really nice. That's what's happening here. And so we're barking up the wrong tree. These guys are making decisions that they shouldn't have to. We should be barking up the tree that brought us here, and that's our government. So I applaud you. I'm sorry you guys are put in this situation, and I hope the community backs you when we go and really ask the hard questions. Now, they did a vote down in June recently, and two of our members up in the Fairbanks-North Pole area voted no. Shame on them. These are our schools. These are our community schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. That will bring us up to about the halfway mark. And so at this time, the board is going to take a brief five, 10-minute recess, and we will be back with the rest of your testimonies here shortly. Welcome back. The board is now back from recess, and we will continue on with our public testimony. And with that, we will have Morgan Woods. Good evening, Ms. Woods. You can state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
All right, my name is Morgan Woods, W O O D S. I'm a proud parent of a Two Rivers Elementary kindergarten student. I am here not just for the school today, but also to be a voice for the parents that could not attend and for the children who love their school. My family and I moved to Alaska about almost four years now after receiving orders to Isles and Air Force Base. We moved to the Two Rivers community in 2022 with plans to retire here. As a mom, I was nervous where my oldest would start his school years. I wanted to find a school where he was comfortable and also safe. Upon my research, I saw we were zoned for Two Rivers. We drove over there and we immediately fell in love with the school and location. In August of twenty-four, we attended the school orientation day with a very nervous kindergartner until, after about ten minutes of a very welcoming staff that made you made you feel like you've known them forever, my nervous kindergartner wasn't nervous anymore. It felt like home. And being a military family, as you may know, all you want is for your kids to feel at home. Taking away Two Rivers would take away his sense of normalcy when these are some of the most precious years in his life. As a mother of young children, having a supportive and safe community is imperative for the well-being of the children and the parents. That is exactly what we have found here at Two Rivers. These children are not only receiving an education, but also life skills like homesteading, which is paramount. All these great things Two Rivers has started should be highlighted and not shut down. The love and care I have seen the faculty pour into our children at Two Rivers is something I have never experienced when I attended school or any school for that matter. This is key for every kid's growth. Being a rural community, we do not have the same opportunities as some of the kids that live in North Pole or Fairbanks. However, with these events, activities, and after-school opportunities the faculty at Two Rivers has started, these kids are always excited and have something to look forward to instead of a one-and-a-half to two-plus-hour bus ride every day. In closing, looking at the district and school data, eight of the thirty-four schools are school-wide Title I schools. And three of the five schools facing closure are school-wide Title I schools. Please reconsider closing why Title I schools like Two Rivers, because this will negatively impact the lives of students already disadvantaged, being on, being on based in poverty from a proud mom of a Two Rivers kindergarten and a future Two Rivers pre-K student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Ariel Cunningham. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Ariel Cunningham, C U N N I N G H A M. I really wanted to be involved in this strategic plan. About a year ago, I emailed and emailed and emailed asking to volunteer. No one got back to me, so life got busy and I admit that I kind of ignored the process and I didn't follow very close. So I apologize if some of the things I say tonight have already been addressed in all of your presentations. I apologize for my ignorance. But I am concerned, oh, no, first of all, I do agree with being more efficient in our use of school resources. I am very thankful to hear that you guys are focusing on PTR and trying to make sure that we are trying to spend our money the best way possible to increase the outcomes for our kids. And a lot of what I saw in the slides made a lot of sense. But there were things, a few things I was concerned about. I am concerned about the Salja bus time. I read that slide, and how it's going to increase like fifty-one minutes for some kids. They're quite out there. And I'm just a little nostalgic. I went to an elementary school the size of Salja, and I loved it. The, I'm a Tikusuk Brown parent, and the kids that went to the neighboring town that had a school the size of Tikusuk, like they were the big school. So I feel very bad for Salja. I hope that you will consider my feelings on that. My husband pointed out, why aren't we closing charter schools? And again, maybe this is my ignorance of what I missed in presentations. But just to share my opinion, charter schools are a luxury. They are beyond the basis of all of our public schools like Midnight Sun and Pearl Creek. I don't understand why they aren't getting closed. Again, I apologize. But the biggest thing I wanted to talk about is I truly don't believe that contracting saves money. My husband is a builder and he says, when you do a contract, you're out to make money. So I don't see how that's going to save money for the school district in the long term unless it hurts either the services that we're getting or the employees who are working for the contracting company. I am also a guard member, and whenever there are guard contract transitions, it's always miserably painful. It never works out nicely. We went over a year without janitor contract services. We had to clean our own toilet bowls. So lastly, Ms. Marmy is our janitor at Tikusuk, and it's breaking my heart that we are losing one of our family members. I will be very sad and frustrated if you guys choose to contract janitor services. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Sarah Hubbard. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Hubbard, H U B B A R D. Good evening. I have come tonight to express my concern on the possibility of Barnett going from a K magnet school to K five. My son is currently attending Barnett and is in the seventh grade. He has been a student with the Vermick North Star Borough School District his whole life. My son first attended Joy Elementary from kindergarten to fourth grade. Within a few weeks of starting fourth grade, he lost his father in a work accident. In that school year, he lost a parent and his elementary school where he had built a support system of safe adults and good friends. Barnett is his fourth school in four years. He is in the middle of his second year at Barnett, and we are finally getting back to a stable, good groove with a good network of friends and teachers that he enjoys. He is even a teacher helper with the kindergartners. He loves it. When I was able to get him into Barnett, I was hoping that I could provide him with the stability of three years at an amazing school before transitioning him to high school. Barnett assured me that they have a great system for getting their students ready for high school, and I would really like to see my son, really like for my son to see that through and for him to have a successful transition. I do not want him shuffled to another school, and I do not want other kids to have to go through what I saw him go through at the end when Joy closed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Erin Gibson. State your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Yes, Erin Gibson, G I B S O N. First, I want to take a moment, say good evening and thank you, school board members, for taking the time out of your lives to be here. It's a big commitment, and you guys have a monumental task ahead of you. I'm here this evening to speak about Barnett Magnet. My children attend Barnett Magnet, and we've been fortunate that our oldest got into that school in first grade, and so all of our kids have had the opportunity to be there. It's been fantastic for our family. I was quite surprised on last Thursday to get an email to find out that Barnett was on consideration to be changed all of a sudden. It wasn't announced on January sixth with the rest of the school closures. And so I just find it odd that at the eleventh hour, you know, there was a plan made in the eleventh hour, we want to change it to make this as an option for changing schools. In the work session last night, I didn't see a fiscal note. I didn't see any monetary advantage to the school district for wanting to change Barnett to a K five. You know, there's been a lot of money invested in Barnett by the school district and by the borough for many years to to rebuild it in phases, make, build a middle school and equip it to house a K eight school. And by all means, I mean, it's a fantastic school for the families that get the opportunity to go there. And I just find it, it gives me It gives me questions as to why we want to change Barnett. What does the school district stand to gain by removing the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and moving them to different schools? If that means that we're going to shuffle kids as the map indicates out of Denali into Barnett and then some kids from across Airport Way, there's transportation increases there, because, I mean, me as a parent, I wouldn't want my kid walking across Airport Way, going to another school. I don't know if anybody else would feel comfortable with that. I wouldn't, especially a K-through-five student. I feel like we're moving kids just to move kids with Barnett, and we're not looking at the problem that we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Princess Johnson. Do we have Princess here? Okay, we'll come back around. How about Rae Trainer? Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Rae Trainer, T-R-A-I-N-O-R. I'm speaking to you today as both a parent and a teacher at Barnett Magnet School. As a parent, I'm so grateful for this school and what it has given my children. My daughter was a very shy and sensitive child in elementary school. She would have had a hard time adapting to and would have languished in a large middle school. The small middle school experience was what she needed to bring her out of her shell. With Barnett's supportive teaching staff, she was even able to speak at her eighth-grade graduation. One of the things that my daughter loved most in middle school was the Reading Buddy program. That peer mentorship is what makes Barnett's K-8 model so strong. I also loved that her education focused on the whole child. She was able to take art and orchestra classes while she was still in elementary school, and this has almost completely vanished from the rest of the district. In middle school, she found the academic challenge she needed at Barnett with the higher math and English levels available to students who needed them. She graduated from Barnett's middle school program and was very prepared for the rigor of West Valley's honors classes. I want all families in this district to have choices of smaller programs for their students if they need them. And this is why I'm urging you to preserve Barnett's K-8 model. As a teacher, I want you to know that Barnett's more diverse than people think. People often think of Barnett as a school of high-income families, but our school population has both high and low-income students with 29% socioeconomically disadvantaged. 100 of our 416 students are on an IEP or 504. That is just below a quarter of our population. We have students of all ethnicities and socioeconomic backgrounds. As a school's art teacher, I try to reach those students by focusing on our cultural standards with Black History Month projects, Alaska Native Arts classes with guest Native artists. Our diversity is what makes us strong, and we would welcome more students and more diversity, but we urge you not to take our middle school away, because it would completely change our magnet model. We would no longer be able to offer the hands-on learning opportunities that are so vitally important to the 21st century labor force. This community needs more magnet schools like Barnett, not less. The thing that makes Barnett so strong, along with those hands-on classes in the afternoon, is the middle school program. 20% of our lottery is from families who apply because of the K-8 model and because they want children in the middle school program. Having middle school mixed in with the upper elementary students has allowed us to offer more hands-on classes that would typically not be offered to elementary students like robotics, home ec., band, orchestra, art, technology, science labs, and yearbook. If middle school were taken out, it would completely change our model and displace 137 middle school students. Hunter is such a strong school, and we all heard the powerful testimony. They don't deserve more change. Barnett would invite Hunter students with open arms. And I've always thought the walking district could be bigger, but don't close it. Just give us some of the students.
Thank you for your testimony. Next on the list, we have Tumi Trustason. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tumi Trustason. That's T-R-A-U-S-T-A-S-O-N. Superintendent members of the school board, I am a parent of two Barnett Magnet School students, and I'm also a science teacher at Ryan Middle School. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. You're facing a tough decision that was going to be hard to make. Many people have commented on the proposed school closure. Such closure will have deep impact on our community. I trust you will give those comments careful consideration before making your final decision. What I want to focus on is the proposal of changing Barnett from a K-8 to a K-5 school if the closure of Hunter Elementary goes through. The plan intended to fix one issue would create numerous other issues. This plan is being released late in the process, so there has not been much time to review what the full implication would be. Eliminating the middle school classes from Barnett would profoundly change the nature of the school where students have had the opportunity to stay through eighth grade, having unique learning opportunities at the same time that they are role models for younger students. Without the sixth-through-eighth grade option for middle school students at Barnett, our district is losing an option that many parents want. If there is not a suitable option within the school district, I worry that we will lose those students to programs outside of the district, making the financial picture for a district even bleaker. The other worry that I have is how we're going to serve additional middle school students. As a teacher at Ryan Middle, I know full well that our school has a capacity. It may show a lower number when you divide the square footage with the student number, but in reality, every classroom is full and our class sizes are large. My science classes have wonderful students, but with each class at 8 or over 30 students, absorbing even more students would be a major challenge. We all know the primary reason for this budget crisis we're facing is as a school district is the fact that state funding has not kept up with inflation. But the change to Barnett's mission might cause additional strain on the district budget. If you lose more students, our options are eliminated, and additional students are added to middle schools that are already at capacity. I therefore urge you to find other ways to accommodate elementary students without dismantling a successful program that gives parents vital options. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Beverly O'Donnell. Good evening. You can state your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Beverly O'Donnell, O-D-O-N-N-E-L-L. I'm a parent and ESAA employee at Salja Elementary. I'm also a non-traditional first-generation student with a high A score and generational trauma. I was one of those at-risk students. I attended Salja Elementary, and it, in countless ways, built my resiliency. My son stayed at school and got to go to cross-country skiing two days after school. One of the reasons that I bought a home in Salja was that I wanted my son to attend an excellent school with excellent cross-country trails that has a long history of high parent involvement and participation. I attended Salja Elementary from 1986 through 93, during a period of peak school population and the heyday of its nationally-ranked high test scores in junior Olympic athletes. Salja Elementary was my refuge during a tumultuous period when I bore much responsibility as the oldest child in a dysfunctional household. The positive interaction with safe adults at school strengthened my resiliency. It was easy for my mother to volunteer at the school and be involved in potlucks and class art projects. I was able to go to after-school tumbling, running, guitar, chorus, skiing, just to name a few. We had the six-mile run on the last day of school and the day-long celebration and barbecue. I want my son to be able to have all of these things. And I know that Salja has run on... We have been running very lean. We have not had the staffing that the budget says would save money to drop that staffing for the following year, for next year. We need to keep our rural schools. This is where our intrepid entrepreneurs are choosing to live. We need to help build our children's resiliency. If the borough wants further development, space is running out between Fairbanks and North Pole. A lot of it's going to be pushing towards Salja area, too. It seems like a lot of these charter schools that are talked about use schools like Salja Elementary as a template. I also have... We'll be sending another email with budgets and links.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Kari Tumason. State your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Kari Tumason, T-U-M-A-S-O-N. I stand before you tonight to tell you that you must keep Barnett as a K-8 school. As an eighth grader who has gone to Barnett for the last nine years and with a fifth-grade brother at Barnett, I can tell you firsthand about the many great things that Barnett offers. And a petition for Barnett Middle School to stay open amassed 59 signatures in just one day, meaning that others agree with my statements. For starters, I will begin by pointing out that dozens of people applied to Barnett purely for the fact that it offers K-8. It's perfect for families, as all the kids can be at one school. Furthermore, some kids do not do well at regular middle schools, including those with various mental disabilities, but can do much better at Barnett. It is also important to keep in mind, if Barnett closes, many of our students, including in middle school and siblings as well as others, will not go to one of Fairbanks's middle schools and will instead go to one of the home schools, leading to even less money for our already struggling district. Barnett is a great school with great teachers and tight-woven sense of community. I have known many of these students for upwards of nine years, and some of them I think of as family. The middle schoolers also act as mentors for the younger students, forming deep connections and enriching the lives of both the younger and older students. Furthermore, we have many exclusive offerings and a more enriching environment. Also, clearly, what Barnett is doing is working, because our school has twice the number of proficient middle schoolers in AK-Star tests as Ryan Middle School, with 55% for ELA and 51% for Math versus 22 and 19% for Ryan. This is a school that works. You should not cut out something that works. We have had so many things cut for the last year. You have taken away so many of our things, yet we still managed to do well. We, too, have large class sizes of things like 33 and 35. We still thrive. And yes, part of that reason is magnet, but a big part of that is the K-8 model. We have a family model. We have a community that has produced highly successful students from state champions in science limp we add with a team of 14 members to robotics teams that regularly go to state and have been to the world champions and a debate team that has only been around for one year, yet still has the highest enrollment of any debate team in the district at 24 members and did the best any Fairbanks team has ever done in their inaugural roles. And we'd managed to do all this with only 140 students in the middle school. Furthermore, we have students such as myself who have been able to go to Lathrop High School for Math with myself and another student in geometry and one in algebra, too. There are numerous students who are set to do the same and would be stuck without an opportunity to pursue their lofty ambitions if Barnett was closed. Barnett can accomplish all these great things, and thus is a winning formula. If we are doing anything, we should be making more schools like Barnett to make more successful and well-rounded individuals. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Naomi Lasota.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You state your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Okay. Naomi Lasota, L-A-S-O-T-A. So I grew up off Farmer's Loop and went to Pearl Creek and Barnett Magnet School. I don't have kids yet, but my hope is that they could one day attend their local neighborhood school here in the borough or be lucky enough to win a lottery, as I was, and be able to get into a magnet school like Barnett. It's hard to know the future of our town when the legislature in Juneau has been able to adequately support schools and invest in our population's future, not only just for Fairbanks, but all over Alaska. And I understand that all of you have inherited this problem and that you're doing your best with all the given resources and information we have now. And it's daunting that the future generations may look back at these decisions and that they, from the future, will know things that we don't, like what the state budget will look like, how closing certain neighborhood schools will affect enrollment, property values, the pull that Fairbanks has on incoming families like our schools and on those who hope to stay and settle here like me. We, as a community, need to set an example for those future generations and for the kids in our district today to show that a community can come together and chart a sustainable way out of this downward spiral. Our community has proposed the creation of a Pearl Creek Magnet School, which could increase enrollment and funding for our district as a whole, give families across the school district and outside more options when it comes to their kids' futures, and show resilience within Fairbanks as a community to rise to the occasion and find our way amidst difficulty. And there is an ever-growing list of families outside the district who would love to enroll their kids at the thought of a Pearl Creek Magnet. There is a website for more information and updates on the Magnet School proposal, and it's at www.pierlcreekmagnetschool.com. If anyone hasn't checked it out yet, it seems like the most hopeful shift to make within these decisions to be made. And I just thank you all, thank the board for considering it and for the opportunity to speak to you all today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Mattingly Morgan. State your names, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Maddie Morgan, M-O-R-G-A-N. Before I begin this testimony, I will state, not only am I calling for the continuation of Barnett as a K-8 school, but I am advocating for Hunter Elementary to remain open. I was a first grader when the COVID pandemic broke out, cutting my second semester short. My parents ultimately decided to homeschool me. I remained in this homeschool program until the end of fourth grade, when I requested to begin attending Barnett, which has been the best decision my family has ever made. Barnett is a safe haven, not just for me, but for all who enter. When I walked through those double doors for the first time, I was confused and intimidated purely by the idea of public school, as I had almost no recollection of my single year in public school. However, not only was the atmosphere extremely welcoming, but the students and faculty were incredibly patient and helpful during my short adjusting period. With the help of my teachers and peers, I academically advanced quickly. For example, when I was in fifth grade, I had around a seventh-to-eighth grade reading level. And this year, sixth grade, I'm at a college level, thanks to the opportunities I have procured. As a sixth grader, completely changing my environment in seventh grade, which, may I state, that is the middle of middle school, would not only greatly hinder my educational progress, but directly damage my mental health. If this proposition comes to fruition, Hunter students would be moved to Barnett. Well, as stated by Hunter parents, teachers, employees, past employees, and many others, 64% of these kids require trauma-trained environments, and in some cases, special ed. Which due to budget cuts and room shortages, Barnett does not have the room to provide. Unless you are willing to supply these services, these are unprecedented times, and difficult decisions must be made. It is crucial to remember, however, that the heart of education should be in the students and families. This is the heart Barnett has, and it is the heart that has allowed me to blossom into the successful young person I am today. The presented slides are full of digits and percentages, but our over 400 students are so much more than that. We are the communities in our school. We are the fourth or fifth or even sixth siblings to make our way through this school. We are staff kids who have spent all our younger years looking forward to walking into that middle school hallway. All these things together have helped to make Barnett what it is today, a substantially successful magnet model that is to be replicated, not torn apart. Our debate team competes at state. One team even took fifth place last year, which is the highest a Fairbanks school has ever placed. And our science Olympiad teams have made it to the national tournament. This all brings me back to my original point. These are tough decisions, but they do not need to be emotionless. Looking at this problem through the lens of numbers is only going to be a disservice to the district students. I implore you to look at this through the lens of families, students, and humans, and the legacy you want to leave this district having obtained. Barnett has left a legacy of excellence, but it doesn't need to leave. It should be allowed to continue that legacy instead. The district is in problem-solving mode. This needs to be done because of the financial crisis our state is facing.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we are going to go back over to Zoom and we should have April Monroe. Ms. Monroe, can you hear us?
April, and my last name is Monroe, M-O-N-R-O-E. So I wanted to actually speak first to all of the parents in the room and listening to just point out that it is absolutely a fact that the majority of our residents, including many people here tonight, and many parents voted this fall against Prop A, and they sent people to Juneau who oppose funding education. And the reality is that we don't have to be here tonight. We don't have to be here as a community that we chose this. So I would urge all of you to go to the Save Our Schools Facebook page and to testify tomorrow for funding our schools, call your legislators, call your governor, and the next time you choose to vote or choose not to vote, to really remember this experience. To the school board members, I wanted to kind of speak to the reality that the proposal that is in front of you guys and the metrics that delivered it seem to be really skewed against rural schools. And this proposition would leave, for most of us, only urban schools available. And I wanted to just flag, it's such an Alaskan value to be outside and to be in the woods and to be in a rural setting. Think of how many of us give up things, you know, using that house at 40 below just so that we could be out in the woods. And I think that that's, that demand to be out in a rural area is also what is driving the demand for Pearl Creek in some fashion. And I wanted to also just do a quick update on the survey to say that currently, but I think it's what we're seeing, I think that's why people want this rural option. We have 196 kids not currently in Pearl Creek that would want to enroll. Eighty-six of those are currently not in the district. I think that you guys are in a pretty reprehensible situation where there is just no just solution. But I think the smartest thing we can do as a district is kind of meet demand, try to turn around the things that are going, prevent and exit, and hope that in the longest term, that this is what serves equity. But I just want to certainly close by reminding everyone, the people who are sitting in front of you making this decision are, did not create the situation that we're in. Ultimately, we created it. And as a community, we're going to have to be the ones to walk it back. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Monroe. Up next, we will have Bonnie Mund. Not seeing Bonnie at the moment. We will come back. And we will go to Janice Dawe. Good evening. If you can state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Janice Dawe, D-A-W-E. I live at the top of Blaine Hill and am a proud Puffin alum, parent, informal educator. I want to say thank you to all of you who have listened to tens of hours of public testimony in addition to all the work that you've been doing to try to find a just and equitable and the most beneficial way to move forward. It is an impossible task and you've shouldered it whether or not you knew that's what you were getting into. So thank you for your service. Thank you also to everybody in the school district, to all the principals and teachers, custodians, staff, parents who are involved in their schools. We have an extraordinary state and we have an extraordinary opportunity in front of us. So I want to say once again that I'm coming here as the lead of a program from the university called One Tree Alaska. We bring, it's completely collaborative. We bring together K-12 teachers and schools and community experts across the steam fields. We were the original STEM to STEAM program here. And it all happened because of three educators back a few years ago who said, "We like the idea of this USDA NIFA grant that you're doing, but we think that it's really ridiculous that you're saying that you're going to come in with all the products that were made from one tree and let our kids hold those things, and that's going to encourage them to go into natural resource management careers." No, you bring the forest into our classroom and you work directly with our kids. And so that's what we did since day one. That was day one of this project. It was just a little two-year project. And teachers have been our co-designers every year. And we've worked with all five schools that are slated for closure and with, I never count, I should, but it's at least an additional 10 to 12 in the district and also schools outside the district. We've worked with every kind of school. So I'm not advocating, you can tell from the testimony, nobody wants to be for one school above another. But I'm going to speak tonight from the heart because the school that we're working with right now is Two Rivers. And a lot of the things that have been said tonight, all I wanted to do was make a checklist of the prior testimony and say, "That's it. They're rural, they're already as good as a steam magnet school because of the homestead program. This is year one. We are one of four partners to it. We're all the partners are beginning to work. We're committed to going ahead. One Tree is committed to working with Allison Wild on finding grants to become an aqua forestry CTE school."
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we will have Jen Gunderson. Good evening, Ms. Gunderson. State your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Jen Gunderson, G-U-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I have two kids in our district. I've been a part of the Pearl Creek community for the last 10 years, and I'm very grateful for the educators and families that have become a part of my life through the school. If Pearl Creek closes, I will be really sad, there's no doubt about that. But while I appreciate the creativity and the effort that has gone into the Pearl Creek Magnet concept, I really don't think that it's a fair option. Another school of choice only further exacerbates the inequity amongst our schools. Concentrating more resources into one school while at the same time closing the schools for our most at-risk populations isn't right. While I appreciate the attempt to bring in kids from across the district to enjoy a STEAM school, I don't think it's actually feasible for many families, especially those who work multiple jobs to make ends meet, to provide their own transportation. Providing your own transportation requires time, gas money, money for snow tires to get up the hill to Pearl Creek. These are barriers that go unconsidered if you haven't experienced poverty. Please find a way to keep Hunter Elementary open. When I looked at the data provided, I am stunned that it was even put on the list. 67% of the students at Hunter are considered economically disadvantaged. The fact that Hunter was selected despite that devastating statistic makes me question the validity of this entire school consolidation process. It makes me wonder if my kid's school, Pearl Creek, should be on the list. We have asked time and time again for a full picture of the data that went into the decision-making process, and what we have received thus far isn't adequate. How can we close a school with the lowest socioeconomic status by far? It's cruel. I know we can rationalize and try to talk ourselves into thinking it'll be okay. Let's not do that. Let's recognize that you, as board members, have a job to serve our entire community and lift up those who need it, to provide an equitable education for all. You have the power to course correct if you believe it's necessary. You can decide that another school could close in place of Hunter. It's not an easy path, but you can do it. Finally, I would like to say that we can get through this transition and help our kids through this transition if we commit ourselves to seeing the good that surrounds us, harnessing the energy, compassion, and creativity that we possess and being intentional about sharing that with new communities. We can be sad, but we can also choose to see the good.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Christine Villano. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Christine Villano. I live at 2142 Bridgewater Drive, Fairbanks, Alaska, V-I-L-L-A-N-O. And I'm thankful that you are here tonight. And I'm thankful to Tim Dorn for being my principal and Brandy for growing up with my kids. Thank you. Jen just blew it out of the ballpark. I don't know if I can even talk. That was a very, very emotional testimony. But I can still get excited about things, Tim. I'm excited about thinking creatively and out of the box because we have to in order to solve the problems before us, declining student population and finances. What I've perceived through this whole process, and my daughter is a number cruncher, we figured out that more and more families are choosing homeschooling and the revenue and our student population decline. Why? I think it's because we're not competitive enough. We need to competitively attract and retain students, not just educators, by thinking of creative ways to improve student learning and student achievement, which is our main goal. The time is now that we're at a crossroads of closing more and more and more and more schools. In each school, you hear the heartrending stories, they all deserve to stay open, but I understand where you're coming from. But if we start reimagining education and think about each of those schools becoming some kind of center or a magnet, it makes me get excited. And I was impressed that Pearl Creek took the initiative to think about becoming a STEAM school in order to attract and retain students. I was, I just wrote that down in my notebook that 86 kids that are in homeschools are interested to attend a magnet school that was a STEAM magnet school. And I looked at their proposal and I thought to myself, this is a cutting-edge format that Don Levy and even people that we don't agree with would support. And it's in line with the national call to enhance and improve public education. Just think what we could do if all schools did that. I'm running out of time, but I just want to say that I am an educational consultant now and I go throughout the state promoting STEAM education and citizen science. And Pearl Creek is already a magnet school in so many ways because their whole school has done the NASA Globe program.
Thank you for your testimony.
And they are the number one school in the nation for data.
Thank you.
From NASA Globe.
Up next, we have Maggie Sampson. Good evening. If you state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
All right, my name is Maggie Sampson, S-A-M-S-O-N. I'm a parent of three in the school district and a counselor at Barnett Magnet School. We all recognize the weight on you guys' shoulders and are not envious of your position at all. But I have to say that I'm not feeling great with this whole process. I appreciate the questions you guys have been asking and the concerns that you've been bringing up. It doesn't make me feel great, though, when I hear that the Star of the North principal was recorded saying that she was already excited about their new home at Midnight Sun before the school's actually been closed. Or when Ms. LaPont had a slip of the tongue and referred to Lad Magnet School last night, or referred to Lad as a magnet school last night at a time in the district when we're looking at changing the only magnet school we have in the district in such a way that it's doubtful it can even continue to be a magnet model. This community wants transparency and understanding on the decisions. We don't want to feel like decisions have already been made without any kind of input or question. So I definitely appreciate you guys and all your questions here. Today's parents are active consumers in their children's education. They want options, and we've heard about that. If they're not happy with options, they leave the school district. And the school district needs to change their educational model in order to keep up with this new reality. They've had months to look at the budget, but I'm curious on what other solutions they've had in looking for additional monies. For the long-term sustainability, the school district needs to provide more options for parents to prevent further loss in enrollment. Barnett gets over 500 students who apply to the program every year. Within just a few weeks, Pearl Creek was able to get 198 students not within their boundary lines, and that included 85 students who are, would be new enrollments to the school district. There's an undeniable community support for schools of choice, and there's a reason why. The district needs a new way of thinking about this and actively seek these students and families out by providing programs that they actually want and not rely on them automatically, or students and families just automatically re-enrolling in the school districts. Families have choice. The magnet schools will draw enrollment, and there is monies there. Pearl Creek approved that when they were looking for specifically magnet school monies. Something to K-8 models is they can access Carl Perkins and CTE monies, and that's a pot of money not available to magnet schools or K-5 magnet schools. Have those options been looked at? There is money there and there are community partnerships that if you want to explore, you can find them. And I was actually kind of working on some of those before our school was kind of up and into these conversations because it's just kind of fascinating how much opportunity there is out there. And again, I really feel like the district needs to look actively and market their program and offer different options for families. Last night, when Lad was erroneously referred to as a magnet school, I just wanted to kind of address that. The current principal was a teacher at Barnett last year, and it was a gut punch when she left, but we were happy for her. Sorry.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Katie Spellman. Do we have Katie Spellman? Oh, okay. I didn't see you behind the post, sorry. You can just state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Katie Spellman, S-P-E-L-L-M-A-N. I am a lifelong resident of Fairbanks. I have daughter Chris Villano, who just testified. I'm a mother, a scientist, and a STEAM education researcher. I have worked in all public and private schools in this district, including many of our homeschools. I was just, as my mom said, I love crunch numbers. I was looking at the National Center for Education Statistics Database and was like, how many students are enrolled in homeschool in our district? And, you know, while I didn't break it down by, I would love to actually, if you already know this, 12,000 students are currently enrolled in Cyberlinks, Idea, and Raven. So 12,000 students, we're only reduced by 2,000 students. 12,000 are in our three interior homeschool programs. So I reckon a large proportion of that is from our area. We need to compete for our students. We need to compete for our students. Like, we are entrepreneurial people. Some of you have the most hustle of anybody I've ever known for getting, selling people on things. We need to get our students back. We have much to offer. It's clear to me in the programs that I personally run on STEAM that homeschool families are hungry for these types of programs. They, I put an application out and within seconds, and I know that you probably experienced this too, Meredith, in the programs you run, homeschool families are filling the roster within minutes of me opening it. They're hungry for these sorts of programs. We need to compete for our students back. We have less control. It's great to, like, I, you know, I'm writing all my letters to increase the BSA and it's great to do that, but we have less control over the politics of funding for education than we do over our own hustle, our own competitive spirit to win our students back to this district. And I do think that the STEAM programming is attractive and draws students in. I agree with Jen in some regards, but it is a crime to close Hunter. It's a crime to close Hunter. But magnets are an option for us to increase our enrollment and increase the total amount of money coming back to our district. We have to compete. It helps every single school, not just those that are trying to innovate like Two Rivers and Pearl Creek. But all of our schools will benefit from this innovation. In the, in the survey that we sent out- the survey that we, we sent out, outdoor learning was the number one priority out of the 355 total responses, 85 of which were out of the district. Number one priority was outdoor learning. Those two schools that are innovating, they have that in, in abundance. So I just urge you to please use the power that we have entrusted in you to leave a legacy of innovation and growth in our community, not a legacy of consolidation and crumble. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Salik Sutton and Simone Spellman. If you guys could just kindly state your name into the microphone, and then you will have three minutes.
My name is Salik Sutton, S-U-T-T-O-N. I want Pearl Creek to stay open, not just me. We do a lot of science and dissecting. Most kids like science, technology, engineering, and math. And also, people who live out of town don't have to drive as far. So I think you should make Pearl Creek a magnet school.
My name is Simone Spellman, S-P-E-L-L-M-A-N. I'm in fourth grade at Pearl Creek Elementary School. When you shut down a school, you aren't just saving money, but splitting up best friends. That's worth more than money. We want to have, have other kids come to our school to do science. We looked inside a real cow's eye. Please don't shut down our school.
Thank you, guys, for your testimony. Up next, we will have Gwen Jackson. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I've got tears in my eyes with the cow eye. I think that's wonderful. Gwen Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. It is amazing to hear the hope and inspiration this evening, and I hope it's contagious. I hope it makes you brave. What I hear the community saying is while you make these very hard decisions, please make at least one of these decisions a meaningful move to turn the exodus around. We do need to turn the other direction. So some of the decisions have to be in the positive direction. Pearl Creek, sorry, I think, I believe there's some misunderstandings around the idea of magnet schools and specifically Pearl Creek because they're the ones on the table right now suggesting that. So I'm hoping I can address some of those. One of those is that Pearl Creek thinks it's better than other schools. They don't. They love their school in the same way that you love your school, and that's all. You, them, us, we're all walking through the same feelings of grief and anger and frustration and sadness. We're all going through it together. So that means all of us can have compassion for each other as we go through this, including our school board and our district. Another one is it takes funding away from public schools. It is a public school. So the district would receive funding per student the same as it does with all other public schools. The district manages and utilizes those funds in the overall budget. In fact, the proposal was made to address two things. One, to draw out of district homeschool and private school students back into the district, which would increase district funding, not decrease it. The other is to meet the ever-increasing reality that the newer generations of parents and parenting styles are demanding a variety of options for their children's education. It is real, and this is an opportunity to evolve along with them. In addition, the fact that it would be STEAM magnet school would open it up to qualifying for additional funding avenues, such as grants from both the public and private sectors, which adds to the revenue stream for the district. Another one is that Pearl Creek wants other schools to shut down instead of their school. That is a twist of words and intentions made from a political perspective. You heard the beautiful huge vision that would be for each school to identify what they're excellent at, their niche, and transform into a magnet school with that focus, so they too can be open to everyone and additional funding opportunities. Juilliard of the North comes to mind. I think that would be really cool if we could have one of those here. In full disclosure, I have a dream that we take this opportunity. Now is kind of the only opportunity to do that. I hope you feel that urgency. Use it to ignite momentum throughout the whole district. Turn it into a district that people move to rather than the exodus that's an unstable school district is leading to. Because of remote work, more people than ever are able to live wherever they want. So I think, why not build something they want to move to? Build something they want to be a part of. Just to serve an elite few of white rich people is another thing that's being said. I understand why some people might assume that's the case, but it does tell me they're unaware of our actual, actual school zone era, area. It includes everything from those large hillside homes you think of, but also dry cabins throughout Goldstream, trailer park residents, lower-income families living in all of those neighborhoods, actually, right next door to the other houses, also near college and university and everything in between. The proposal would allow greater opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Dawn Oland. Good evening. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Right-handed. I gotta move this. All right. My name is Dawn Oland, O-L-U-N-D. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share. First, I just want to share just a couple, a few things about myself. I grew up here in Fairbanks, and I'm a product of the Fairbanks public school system. I went to Nor Dale, Weller, Tannanon, Leithrip. I had an excellent experience in our schools. I loved it. I then went on to UAF, and after some searching, landed my feet in education. I did my student teaching with Jane Bedford at Hunter. I also got to be a building sub at Hunter for a year and a half. Such an excellent way to grow and get my foot in the door with the school district, a time when that was very difficult to get a teaching position in Fairbanks. I value all the time that I got to be a part of the Hunter community. August of 2004, I got hired at Pearl Creek, and I've been there ever since. Twenty years of teaching kindergarten mostly, with some K-1 and first grade mixed in there. I'm so blessed. I've taken a new adventure professionally, and I currently teach PE at Pearl Creek. I love it. I also loved teaching kindergarten, but for those that truly know me, know why PE is a great fit. Pearl Creek's physical location is important. During the school day, students snowshoeing for 30 to 60 minutes, skiing on the extensive ski trails, hiking in the forest, sledding, shoveling our ice rink so that we can skate with our classes. I know there are other schools in the outlying areas who can take advantage of these reasons people live here. I value teaching our children to find an activity that gets them moving. Helping students experience indoor and outdoor activities is the best way for them to develop healthy living and healthy habits. This is just as important as teaching them to read. Young children need to move. All my years in kindergarten and my own life experiences has taught me that movement is essential. It's a good release, good endorphins, strong bodies, striving to strengthen their minds. Pearl Creek's location does matter. I'm sure it was chosen 40-plus years ago as an excellent location for an elementary school. There is so much green forest. It's beautiful. Studies show that green spaces near schools promote cognitive development in children, and green views near children's homes promote self-control behaviors. And experiments have found, have found that being exposed to natural environments improves working memory, cognitive flexibility, and attentional control, while exposure to urban environments is linked to attention, attention deficits. In the quick survey put out by Pearl Creek's parents, 75% of parents list outdoor learning and time outside as a top priority for their child's school. Being active and outside is important to our community. I have repeated a special sentence over my years of teaching kindergarten. You can do hard things. I have this big and bold in the gym at Pearl Creek and refer to it often. Students say it to each other and say it with confidence. Please, let's be very careful and choose what's best for them and only make them do the hard things that are necessary.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we will have Sawyer Stevenson. Do we have Sawyer? Oh, there he is. If you can state your name for us in the microphone, spell your last name, you'll have three minutes. Good job.
Hello. My name is Sawyer Stevenson. I'm a student at Pearl Creek Elementary. At one point, my class had 30 kids sit out once. It made it hard to think from all the noise. There was less room in the class, and it was hard to learn from all the noise. And also because you couldn't get help from the teacher. For the first two months of school, we had a substitute teacher. We started with 30 kids, now we have 24. Keep in mind, we are in a four or five classroom. My best friend also switched to ICS because he wasn't learning. We are losing so much money from people leaving. I also don't think that teachers are going to like teaching 30-kid classes. Are we going to keep closing schools, Fairbanks?
Thank you. Up next, we have Sarah Lewis. Good evening. If you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Sarah Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. I have two things I wanted to address tonight, and I hope I can get to them. I don't want schools to close, and I've been right here before saying that, but more and more, I'm also realizing that simply asking the school board not to close schools is kind of shooting the messenger. I know I'm not the first person to make that point tonight, but it bears repeating. In the immediate context, the thought lies with Frank Tomacheski, Mike Prax, and Robert Myers, who are the Fairbanks area representatives who last year voted against the override to the governor's veto of education funding. That override failed by one vote. Any one of those representatives could have changed the outcome and changed where we are now. So to everyone in the room, please contact them and let them know how you feel about that. Print it out all the contact information for the entire interior delegation, and it's all in the back table for people to grab. There's also information there about testifying to the House Education Committee over the next couple of days. My second topic has to do with the $6 million budget deficit that the district will face even if all five schools close. I would like to talk about North Star College. Let me preface this by saying, I hope that I've missed something or misunderstood something going through the budget as a layperson, and if that's the case, I hope someone will correct me. But my understanding is, North Star College is a middle college program, which is an agreement between UAF and the school district. It's a school of choice option for up to 200 high school juniors and seniors, and they're accepted via a lottery process. The students selected take UAF classes full or part-time and earn both their high school diploma and college credits. It's possible for North Star College students to graduate in the May of their senior year with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. My issue with North Star College is that the Fairbanks-North Star Borough School District pays every cent of those students' tuition, books, and fees to the university. By my admittedly rough calculations, the BSA amount the district receives for that number of students covers roughly half of the amount that the North Star line item on the district budget is. Bad sense. I'm not going to have time to say everything I wanted to say about that, but the TLDR version is that we can't afford to pay for college for our high school students. The situation actually really made me livid the first time I looked into it because I feel like I'm finding to get my third grader into a classroom with under 35 students. And meanwhile, there was a 17-year-old North Star College student at my UAF yoga class last spring who took the attendance-only grading policy as an opportunity to have a nap every day. So I can anticipate the district perspective that it may not look great to disband North Star College. It's fairly new. It was considered a huge accomplishment. Chancellor White and President Pitney like to trot it out a lot as a big accomplishment and great for the workforce development. However, I want to take a book from the page of many other speakers here tonight, that this is an opportunity to do things differently, and perhaps closing that program is what it's going to take to get the university on board with speaking up for public education funding.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Erin Gibson. It's gonna be Denali? Ms. Denali Gibson. If you can state your name for us, and you've got three minutes.
I am Denali Gibson, G-I-B-S-O-N. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Denali Gibson. I am eight years old. I want to talk about why I don't think changing Barnett Magnet School is a good idea. First, Barnett is already a great school where we love to learn. If we change it, we might lose some of the fun stuff we do, like art and music class, science projects, and other cool ways to learn. I didn't, did I mention I'm a yellow boat in Tech Window? This is a class we have at Barnett. If that, if that happens, I think a lot of kids would be sad because those things are what make school fun. Secondly, Barnett feels like a big family. All of the kids and teachers care about each other. If we change Barnett, we may not see our friends every day, or, or we could end up in different schools. If we would, it would be hard to stay close with the people we know and love. Also, middle, the middle school kids at Barnett help their younger kids, help the younger kids, and we look up to them. They're really important to our school because they show us how to be good students and good friends. If we change the school, we might lose that, and it wouldn't feel like the same school anymore. Lastly, Barnett helps kids learn in different ways. Some kids need extra help, and some kids learn faster. At Barnett, everyone gets support that they need. If we change the school, it might not be harder for the teachers to help everyone in the right way. For all these reasons, I don't think changing Barnett is a good idea. It's already a great school, and I hope you'll keep it the way it is so we can keep learning and growing here. And I have a really cool principal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Denali. Very good testimony. Up next, we will have Tim Poindexter. Good evening, Mr. Poindexter. If you could state your name. We're great. State your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Timothy Poindexter, P-O-I-N-D-E-X-T-E-R. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think y'all have probably seen me once or twice here. Well, I'm here as a, oh, I'm a computer network engineer. I'm an ex-sailor, ex-marine. So I fought for this country. I've done a lot of fighting, and now I'm here to fight for the school, not just Two Rivers, but five of them. All five of these schools are vying for their very existence by you people. And I think if somehow or another, y'all come up with some viable solutions other than just closing the schools, and I know there's a heck of a deficit. I've spoken with Ms. Burnett and several of the other school board members, Bob, and I know this is a very tough task, but I think it can be resolved in another, in other ways. I know our dear president has come up with a lot of suggestions that he probably will put into law, which might abolish this whole board because they want the local schools and the communities to take charge of their schools. They don't want principals to be just hired by y'all. They want principals to be hired by the community. They don't want teachers to have tenure. They want teachers that are the best qualified people to teach the children. Y'all took an oath at the very beginning of your tenure as school board to uphold the Constitution and the safety of these children. Well, Two Rivers, I'll just use them, because where I live is in Two Rivers. The safety that these children are going to have riding the bus for an hour each way daily from the longest trip of this is not a safe environment as an unsupervised vehicle. Now, y'all may change this next year to be a supervised bus, but right now, it's not. There are so many things that have to be looked at. Y'all's deficit is, is great. It's a very large deficit. But I think if it was looked at in one or two years ago, it could have been resolved a little bit better before your tenure, probably, on the school board. Last year, I sat here, and I am the treasurer of the PAC, the parent organization. I am not a parent. I am not of any child there, but I am a parent of children that's probably older than everybody except one person on that board. A grandparent and a great-grandparent. And when my children want to come to school... And when my children want to come to school, I want them to come to school at a local establishment, a local school. Whether it's going to be one of the ones you're closing, I hope not. I hope Two Rivers is open for them to go.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Poindexter. Up next, we will have Susanna Westhoff. Good evening. If you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Susanna Westhoff, W-E-S-T-H-O-F-F. Sorry, I hate microphones. Uh, Susanna Westhoff, W-E-S-T-H-O-F-F. I am a teacher at Salcha Elementary School. Um, I was a teacher at Nordale. My son did child find at age three. Um, he's high functioning autistic severely ADHD, had a receptive language delay. Emma Nelson at Joy Elementary changed our lives forever. We even named our dog after her. She's an incredible human. When Joy shut down and he went to another school, he had good experiences, but the combination of kids into that school led to a lot of things that were not positive for him and did not grow him. That included the services provided there. In one year, they went through three speech language pathologists because they were not keeping accurate data. I know this because my son is an articulation. After this year and some issues that continued on, I decided to put my two-year-old into daycare and then to go back to teach because my son deserves better. I found heaven in Salcha Elementary. I teach fourth and fifth grade there. My son is in third grade and Ms. Katie's class and he thrives there. He gives, she gives him opportunities to not just be a student, but to be a leader. Those are things he hasn't had before. He has made friends. He's not bullied there anymore. He has grown academically. He has grown socially. He has grown emotionally. He loves Ms. Sarah who comes in and pulls him out for sped services and Ms. Chrissy, Ms. Christine that comes and does speech there. I mean, he's just grown. He's a different kid. I want my daughter to have that experience there and she's, she'll be three in March. I have eighteen children in my class. I don't call them my students. I call them my kids because I love them like my kids. And they're asking me questions about how the, how their mental health is going to handle this. They're afraid that they're not going to have enough money to be able to afford to do other things as a family. Or they're afraid that they're not going to have enough money for them to go to a different school, so now they're going to have to be homeschooled. These are eighteen children who will be productive members of society one day. We have to take this into consideration. They can't be left behind.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Skylar Sauder. Sauter, sorry sweetheart. You can state your name, spell your last name. You have three minutes.
I'm Skylar Sauter, S-A-U-T-E-R. And, uh, I, I, I am a student at Barnett. Um, and I'm a middle schooler. I do not want middle school to go away. It's really, it's really hard for, um, you to be away from your friends after you have to go to a different school. I know that when I was living in Florida, I went to Plato Academy and I had lots of friends and then I moved up here and I, I didn't have those friends anymore. It's different since these people have had friends since maybe even kindergarten and they're pulled away from their friends. And it's, and it's just really sad. And, um, I think that's all I gotta say.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Skylar. Up next, we have Rebecca Matz. Good evening, Rebecca. If you could state your name, spell your last, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Matz, M-A-T-Z, and I am a success story of the schools of choice in this school district. I attended Barnett from two thousand and nine to twenty eighteen. And then I went to Hutch and was very lucky to get the opportunity to participate in North Star College for my senior year. I graduated from this district in twenty twenty-two. Currently, I am a UAF senior in our honors college at UAF and I will be graduating this spring with honors distinction, a year ahead of, of schedule, which is definitely a daunting feat. I actually got the opportunity as a high schooler to work at Hunter Elementary School and at Barnett with their after-school programs. And I came to this meeting today from my volunteer work with Barnett at the robotics program. They are the only school that still has a program for robotics in this district. One major issue with transplanting Hunter students, as you've heard from other people, is that it would realistically leave them with less support than if you kept Hunter open. The economically disadvantaged numbers for each school are as follows. Sixty-seven percent for Hunter and twenty-nine percent for Barnett. If you consolidate, Barnett will be at forty-four percent. These numbers come from free and reduced lunch enrollment and could very well be higher. The district presented information to you on student support changes. This information did not give any added student support to Barnett, as well as the student support programs after consolidation slide showing the loss of an after-school program. As someone who's had the opportunity to work at both programs, I can attest to how important these programs are for people in the district. Now, everything that I have learned at UAF and the countless research papers that I have read on subjects like this says that yes, if you go through with this, some students will thrive. But for each student who thrives, just how many will struggle with the additional challenges that moving schools poses? You've heard testimony from teachers who work with these underserved kids and how saving some money for the district would have a huge negative impact on the people who elected all of you here to serve for our community. I, that said, there's been no secret that there has been a push to change Barnett from a magnet school by individuals on the board for years now. So let me shed, shed some light on programs that will be lost should this go through. For one, there is the yearly musical that I volunteered with for the past two years. The Science Olympiad Program where fourteen students had the opportunity to travel to Michigan this summer to compete on the national level. And as I mentioned earlier, robotics on Saturday, five Barnett students back there will participate at state and Anchorage. I did robotics from fourth through eighth grade and got to go to Legoland Invitational and the world tournament because of the people at Barnett and because of the staff that surrounded me. For these reasons, schools of choice work and we need to keep them. And we also need to work to find other solutions for our monetary si- situation.
Thank you for your testimony. Last on our list for testimony this evening, we'll go over to Zoom to Rhonda Schlumbom. Ms. Schlumbom, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we, yes, we can hear you. Go, uh, state your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Rhonda Schlumbom, S-C-H-L-U-M-B-O-H-M. Dear members of the board, thank you again for allowing communities to speak about the schools they love. And thank you all for working late into the night last evening. Last evening's testimony by Nancy Teeter inspired me to testify again. I want to speak to the words place-based. Salcha is a place-based school. The school honors and grows the knowledge about the Salcha community. The world, the word Salcha comes from the Salchakic native, Native Americans, which lived a subsistence lifestyle where these children go to school. In fact, the last known living Salchakit Native America, American lives just around the corner from the school. Her name is Cecilia Balch and she is almost ninety-two. Her mother, Bessie Barnabas, made a birch basket that is on display at the Salcha Museum. Salcha kids learn about the Salcha River, which happens to be the most important habitat for spawning Chinook salmon in the whole of the Yukon River drainage. Think of that. Salcha's children are rooted in their place. From our seniors who visit classrooms to the fire station who helps for outdoor school. Salcha kids have learned from the networks the school has developed through its entirety. Kids measure the frost depth from the frost tubes and put, input the data for citizen science initiatives. They ski and they run on those beautiful trails. They learn about trees from one tree and their, and fish and their place. We know that kids who feel connected to their community, communities do better. Moving Salcha's children from their place disrupts the connections they have with their community. When Anderson and Crawford merged, it was within the same community rooted in the military and literally across the street. Moving the Salcha children from their community and culture is very different. Ielson's mission is to protect our country. Because of this important mission, there could be potential problems with parents and children having access to school. Today's unfortunate plane crash highlights that point. I speak, I recently spoke to two families and asked them if Salcha closes, what are they going to do? Both families said they would pull their kids out. That is three students gone if Salcha closes. I wonder how many of the other families are planning the same thing. I have written letters to my legislators and am planning to testify tomorrow. There will never be enough money to do the right thing, though I am sure that the money is the sole reason for these decisions provided now to our children, or at least I would hope that it was and it shouldn't be. Salcha kids, our country outdoor kids. I urge you to act upon the creative solutions many have suggested and keep our schools open. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We want to thank everybody for being here tonight. That does bring us past our three-hour time limit and to the end of our pre-signups. Um, we thank you so much for being involved and engaging with us. Um, and the board has scheduled a work session for Monday, February third. And so we will be right back here in the boardroom, um, to go over testimony from tonight and things like that. So thank you very much and we hope you all have a great evening. And with that, we are adjourned.